Today is the Thursday, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual slash remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. Relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website, and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: A link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, and a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website, and or in the public, I'm sorry, in the Plannings and Engineering Department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. And please withhold questions until the particular applicant's witness has finished their testimony, which point we'll open it up for questions. Instructions for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, press the raised hand button. To use this feature, click on the Participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner, lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comments. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, and I ask that you do this so that we can make sure to get to everybody, if after you're done speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button again. If calling in, press star three again. That way, your hand will no longer be raised, and I will know which members of the public still wish to provide a question or comment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Cheryl Bethia. Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Rich Prokanic.
Here.
Joel Reese.
Here.
Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenfall.
Here.
Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Hunal Lakia.
Here.
Basim Verdas.
Here.
Elizabeth Clarkan asked to be excused this evening. Chairman Thomas.
Here. I believe we have one set of minutes tonight, October twenty-first. They were sent to you. Is there a motion?
I moved to accept.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
Rich Prokanic.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenfall.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
Basam, Basim Verdas.
Yes.
And Robert Thomas.
Yes. Okay, we have nothing on the agenda until we get to the hearing section.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed to the application, I just wanted to give the board members a quick reminder on something.
Yeah, I was gonna give you, give a quick thing as a summary to introducing you.
Please do. Sorry about that.
Board members, I'm sure, are aware of a, of a local issue involving an application at Rutgers Plaza Shopping Center with the Kmart building. Some things have happened over the week that are a little unusual. I've asked Frank to address us. There most of you, probably many of us, don't even know the specifics. We have not been given any paperwork concerning the application that we usually get for the zoning board. It's, it's important for the public to know that, and I asked Mr. Reagan to appraise us of our responsibilities and obligations as board members, because I know that at least three of us on the board, including myself, have gotten phone calls from residents either thanking us for approving this application, thanking us for rejecting it, or asking what the heck is going on. So, we're in the dark. We know what we read in the online newspaper, basically, because we've not gotten any information. I'm asking now if Frank can address that a little bit as our responsibilities, and maybe as to what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna specifically address that application, Mr. Chairman, at this time. I think, you know, when it, when it's scheduled to come before the board, which I think will be sometime in the new year, we can get into that in more detail, but I think it was, it's important in light of what the chairman just said. And I think you're all well aware of this, but I just want to emphasize it again and remind you that if you're contacted by a member of the public, by the applicant, by a representative of the applicant, whether that be by email, by telephone, by correspondence, or even if you run into somebody, you know, in a store, you should not, and, and they ask you about a particular application or matter that's pending before the board, you need to advise them, you know, that you're not in a, you're not permitted by law to discuss that matter one-on-one with them or correspond with them in any way, because any discussions that this board has with respect to a pending application must be, must be done, you know, at a public hearing where everyone gets the opportunity to, to one, hear what is going on with respect to that application, then obviously have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, and, and for both the applicant and you as board members to, to question those people. So, it's just important, you know, that you maintain that that, that distance from, and, and communication really is the better word, with anyone with respect to, to any application that's pending before the, before the board. And if for some reason, you know, somebody is persistent in trying to, to communicate with you in any means, feel free to reach out for myself or Mark, because obviously, you know, one of our roles is to, to assist you in dealing with a situation like that. So, we just want to make sure of it in light of, as the chairman said, I guess, one particular application that, that, that will, that is scheduled or has been submitted to the board and scheduled for consideration, that there's been some communication or attempt to communicate with.
I have a question, Mr. Counselor. I suppose I'm at a meeting, and they tell me to leave the meeting because of this application. What do I say?
I guess I'm not sure what, when, when you say a meeting, I, I'm not sure what kind of meeting you're talking about, if you could maybe. I mean, is it, is it a public meeting?
Uh, I don't think so. Well, I, I don't know. It could be, because it's.
I mean, a, a public meeting is one thing, but again, there really shouldn't be any discussion about a particular application, you know, other than a public meeting, other than, you know, the zoning board. I mean, if it was a private meeting, again, I think that's the same situation, that if there's a discussion about a pending application, then you should excuse yourself from participating in that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I think that's good advice to follow, and I think a good rule to remember is just error on the side of caution if you're not sure. Say, say nothing. Okay. We all have our opportunity to speak publicly when there is a hearing, so that's, that's basically the, the way the zoning board operates. There are no executive sessions per se. There's no discussions on things. Everything is transparent, above-board, and in public at the board meetings. Okay, Capital Holdings, seventeen eighty-four Capital Holdings, LLC, ZBA twenty-one oh 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 nine, D-one use variance, preliminary final major site plan with variances in which the applicant is seeking approval for construction of a hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred thirty-five square foot self-storage facility at sixteen thirteen Route twenty-seven Somerset Block eighty-five lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine point oh one in the GB zone. If we could bring in all the appropriate people, we could begin the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Murphy here. I am the attorney for the applicant. I'm just waiting to see who else on my team needs to be let in. Christine, I believe we provided you with a list. That would be Josh Klein, Louis Vandalouche, Craig Rayn Camp, and myself.
At this time, the people who are on the screen with you, Mr. Murphy, or yourself, Josh, Mr. Klein, Mr. Vandalouche.
Vandalouche, yeah.
Okay, Miss whatever, Krieg.
Okay.
Racking Camp, Michelle Bach is on there.
Okay.
And Kelly McKee, McKellen is on there. I don't see Jesse, I don't see Jesse Ray.
Okay.
Expecting her.
I believe she may be calling in, but we're not gonna have Jesse provide testimony, so I think we're okay to move.
Okay, so then all of your people that you provided on your list are here.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you, thank you, Christine. Thank, thank you, Chair, members of the, the board. For the record, my name is Chris Murphy with the Law Firm of Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilks, here on behalf of applicant seventeen eighty-four Capital Holdings LLC. I'm, as the chairman described, we're here tonight in connection with the property located at sixteen thirteen Route twenty-seven, more specifically Block eighty-five lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine point zero one. And this is zoning board application twenty-one dash zero zero zero, zero zero zero, nine, excuse me, four zeros and a nine. We're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval along with variance relief, including a D-one use variance and, and certain C variance relief in connection with the development of a three-story self-storage facility totaling a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet along with, with canopy parking for recreational vehicles. We have noticed this application properly pursuant to the municipal land use law. We do have multiple professionals here to testify. Our first will be Josh Klein, who's our professional engineer, so, Mr. Chair, if we can get Josh sworn in, and then we'll qualify him as an expert, I would appreciate it.
Okay, let's do it.
Mr. Klein, if you would raise your right hand, you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And just for the record, I, I guess we, Mr. Murphy said it a few times, your name, so I think.
No problem. Josh Klein, K.L.I.N.E.
Great. Counselor, if I, if I can qualify my witness, or Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how you do it here.
Please go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Mr. Klein, for the benefit of the board, can you please provide us with some information on your educational background and professional experience to get you qualified as an expert in the field of engineering?
Of course. So, I, I'm a team lead with Stonefield Engineering and Design. Our address is ninety-two Park Avenue, Route zero seven zero seven zero. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I attended the University of Vermont, where I received a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. Been working in the field of land development for over eight years, specifically site and traffic engineering. I've worked on over two hundred and fifty commercial residential and industrial projects throughout the Northeast, including over.
We can qualify him as an expert and.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Klein, for the record, you're licensed since current in New Jersey?
Yes, it is current and extended.
Thank you. Wonderful, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Klein, you're familiar with the applications that's been submitted and the plans that have been submitted to the board?
Yes, the application, the materials, and the plans I am familiar with.
Wonderful. For the benefit of the board, could we please provide an overview of those plans? I know we had submitted, Mr. Chair, some exhibits prior to this hearing. Mr. Klein is gonna share his screen. They've been pre-marked, I believe, Mr. Klein, if you can confirm that, and, and we can go forward with the presentation.
Yes, if I do maybe misspeak to the number, let me know. I'm just trying to pull up my list. But I believe this, this should be A1. This is the, an aerial exhibit prepared by our office. Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're, we're in front of you with a, a self-storage application. I think as you see, as we go through, this, this is not what we think about when we talk about, you know, traditional or, you know, what used to be the self-storage industry. I mean, this is a, you know, kind of a state-of-the-art facility, and I think you're gonna see that tonight through the architecture. You're gonna see that through the enhanced security that I'll be speaking to, and you're gonna see that through some of the landscape improvements on-site. And I think the, the overall takeaway from my testimony tonight is, you know, this is a low-impact use. This is a great use, and a use that you wanna see in an area like this, that kind of is transitioning between kind of commercial and residential uses. From a site, civil, and traffic perspective, this use, this project will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood, community, and infrastructure, from, again, from a site, civil, and traffic perspective. I think one of the important things to note, and I always like to kind of get it out in the open with these type of projects, is this facility is geared towards a residential consumer. So, this facility is not meant in commercial uses, cannot use this facility, so a plumber, a landscaper cannot rent one of these spaces and keep their commercial vehicle in it. You cannot store hazardous materials. You can't store gasoline cans in the unit, so, you know, for example, no manufacturing is permitted, no hazardous materials are permitted, permitted, no living in your units, no overnight stays are permitted, no overnight stays are permitted within the long-term kind of recreational and, and vehicle storage or boat storage area. There's no food or perishable items, and then none of the units are refrigerated within the building as well. And then next, kind of before I get into the application itself, I just wanted to kind of go over, we have received review letters from the depart, different departments, as well as the board professionals. I think overall, the board planner letter, the fire prevention letter, the police and safety, the health department, I guess, all the departmental letters, including the board planner letter, we have no issue complying with, and we have reviewed. Now, the board engineering letter, I, our office didn't meet with the board engineer prior to this meeting, and we have no issue complying with his letter. During our conversations, you know, we did kind of, there was two items that we flagged that we'd have to work with his office on. Comment number nine, which was kind of the location of any stormwater outfall, and we agreed, again, to work with his office to come up with an acceptable solution, and he did find that acceptable. And then comment number eleven was in reference to kind of the pervious material, or the pervious pavement or paver that's being used on-site. And again, the, the final exact spec of the pervious material that we're using hasn't been done, and so we agreed that whatever material we, we do use would have to be found acceptable by the board engineer. So, those are, I mean, again, very, very minor, but I think, you know, the, the general takeaways here is we're complying with all comments that we've received to date from all departments and from all board professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. All right, so let's start with this exhibit A1, which is, I'm sorry, Josh, I'm having trouble seeing the screen. What, what are we titling this?
This is an exhibit dated twelve-six twenty-twenty-one, and already has been submitted. So, I just wanna kind of orient, if there's any, if there's public on the board, our site is here, is bordered in yellow. To the north, we have the Kingsbury, Kingsbury Acres Residential Development. We also have a medical plaza as well with, that's within the township. As you work your way to the, to the northwest, we have the Hempstead Gardens. It also kind of wraps a little bit to the south of our property, just based on the angle. We also have a, a commercial kind of shopping center along Route twenty-seven that's to the south. And then as you work your way kind of further to the south, we have the Township of New, of North Brunswick. And again, this is a residential, single-family zone, so we have, you know, kind of the cluster residential zone kind of to the north in the west, and then to the south, we have general business with some highlighting on the screen, and then again, cross, across the state highway, we have a residential zone that's in the township of North Brunswick. We have kind of running east and west is Route twenty-seven. This is NJDOT jurisdiction. It's two-way traffic. It's undivided highway. No shoulder, no street parking. There is sidewalk and curbing present. And I think as you kind of look at, before I zoom into the site a little bit, I mean, I think one of the, the big notable features here is, is the lot geometry, right? So, this, this lot is six and a half times deeper than it is wide. So, this is a, a very unique-shaped lot within this, within this area. And you can kind of see that as you, you know, we have a, you know, about three hundred, believe it's about three hundred, approximately three hundred feet of frontage, and again, the site is about six and a half times deeper. So, it's a, it's a very unique lot in that sense. Some other things to note, there's no stormwater management on the site today. Water hits the site. There's different brush piles, dirt piles, and features. Water kind of dissipates in all different directions. Nothing's controlled, nothing's managed on-site. The, the site, there also is a topography change that I think is important. Route twenty-seven is about six to seven feet higher than the rear of the site, so as you work your way from the right side of the page to the left side of the page, or to the top-left corner, there's that grade drop across the site, and again, based on the length of the site, it's, you know, it, it's not significant, but it's, it is significant in noting, you know, that Route twenty, Route twenty-seven is a, a higher than kind of all the surrounding grades around us. I'm just, existing features, again, as part of this development, we will be demolishing the site. You know, there's a lot of miscellaneous features. I think over the years, the site has changed a lot. Areas have been disturbed. Brush piles have been moved. You can kind of see as I zoom in, you know, we have, you know, kind of trucks that are parked in the rear. Even from times that our office was out there and our survey crew was out there, you know, we've seen kind of some of the brush piles be adjusted, you know, we have, we've noted, you know, there's brush piles, dirt pile, mulch piles that have kind of been pushed around the site. This wasn't, this site was a kind of a landscape garden center. There's, we have greenhouses, four greenhouses towards the front of the site. There's two kind of main structures, so there's some miscellaneous structures, canopies, coverings, you know, different kind of features throughout the site. You can kind of even see in the interior, you have, you know, different types of vehicles that are kind of being stored. If you go to the back, you can even see some vehicles I'm highlighting on the screen, kind of lined up right against the property line. Again, some larger trucks near the back of the site, but in general, the, you know, the site has been, you know, previously disturbed, you know, from Route twenty-seven all the way back. And I think something will, that will lead into, as I continue to talk about the proposed improvements, you know, there, there are ninety-eight trees on-site. We'll, we'll be removing seventy-six of them, but I think one of the important takesaways is we're gonna be planting two hundred and eighty-four total trees as part of this project. There's a very significant landscape plan associated with the site. There's a reason for it. We're, we're located within the DRCC Zone B. So, this project is subject to the DRCC review and approval. We have submitted to them. They've reviewed the project. They've found our improvements acceptable. The next step would, would be to get their approval would require a resolution or approval from, from this body. But again, that's, that's really, you know, one of the driving factor. I mean, their requirements are more stringent than the new, the new NJDEP regulations that were passed. They require us to have green infrastructure at a higher level than anything within the township ordinance, anything within the NJDEP kind of stormwater regulation. So, you know, you're gonna kind of see that reflected in the landscape plan, as well as a stormwater management design.
Yes, this has been pre-submitted, Mr. Chair. Counselor, this is Exhibit A2. This is a colored rendering of the site plan.
Thank you. And again, this is, this is essentially taking, you know, kind of the documents that have been submitted and kind of colorizing them, and what we've done is the plan, just based on, again, the, the length of the lot on the site plans that were submitted, we kind of had to split it into two different viewports. But I think to help talk about the lot and the surroundings, we, we kind of adjusted this exhibit to show it as, as one lot. So, again, we have Route, Route twenty-seven on the right-hand side of the page that's kind of to the southeast. The rear of the site, which you'll hear me kind of note, is the left-hand side of the page, which is kind of to the, the west or the north, and again, we have the, we have the Hempstead Gardens to the north of the top of this page, as well as the medical office, which is kind of covered by this table. We have, then to the south, we have Kingsbury Acres, as well as kind of this commercial shopping center as well. So, as part of this application.
Mr. Klein, just to, just to correct up for the record, I, I think you have that mixed up, just the other way around. It's gonna be Kingsbury Gardens to the, to the top of the page, I believe.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. In terms of what we're proposing, there's two components. There's, the first part is the self-storage building. This is, I'm highlighting on the screen, is that kind of on, is the right-hand half of the development. This is a, you know, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight square foot proximate is the first floor. It's about a hundred and twenty-one, hundred and twenty-two thousand square foot GFA self-storage facility. It is three stories. It does meet all the setback requirements, so it is kind of located within all the setback requirements. And kind of some of the, the key features, and again, the architect will go into it. We have the, the office area, which is located on the right-hand side of the building, kind of closest to Route twenty-seven, as well as the parking along the front. We also have kind of two internal loading areas. These are climate-controlled loading facilities, and the key to these loading facilities is they do have doors that come down. So, they're climate-controlled. The vehicle pulls up, the door would open, they would pull themselves inside, the door would close. So, kind of all the loading operation is completely contained within the building.
You said, Josh, you said that all of the, that the building meets all of the, the setback requirements. Is that is that true for the side setbacks as well? Side yard setbacks?
So, so, correct. The self-storage building, which I'm highlighting on the screen, meets the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks.
And just to be clear, Commissioner, we will be, there is a side yard. Correct. There's a side yard deficiency when we move back to the canopy section, so that, that, you might be noting that.
Right. Now, how far back is the, is the building setback from Route twenty-seven?
The building is set back ninety feet.
Ninety feet?
Correct, ninety feet.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of moving to the, the left-hand side of the site or to the west of the site, now this is the, I'll zoom in a little bit. This is the covered storage area. So, this area is for recreational vehicles, boats, and kind of, you know, are the typical vehicles that you see in these areas. Again, people can't junk, you can't, you know, store a junk car or broken-down car. You can't work on a car or work on a vehicle in these areas. Again, this is for people to store their recreational vehicles, their boats, kind of different investments that they have in this area. And so, above these areas, you can kind of see in yellow, these are the canopies that we're talking in reference. So, these canopies are about seventeen feet in height. They are sloped, so they do vary height to kind of move runoff. There's two canopies being proposed. There is a total of seventy-five spaces, fifty in the canopy in the center, and then there are twenty-five spaces. So, the larger spaces are fourteen feet by forty-six feet. The smaller spaces are fourteen feet by twenty-nine. The canopy to the bottom of the page is set back five point seven feet, so that is located within the side yard setback. But again, this isn't a, this isn't a full-height building. The canopy is, is set down. I think one of the, the important notes to kind of talk about, you know, the, the, what's surrounding the site as we talk about these canopies, is the site is fully secured, so around the site, there is a, there's two different types of fence. There's an eight-foot-high fence around the secure area, which I'm highlighting on the screen right now. That's the, where the canopies are located. And that consists of a, a decorative two-foot CMU block with a decorative wrought iron fence on top, so two feet of block, six feet of decorative wrought iron. And then as you work your way towards the front of the site or along the building, we have a six-foot-high total, again, two-foot decorative CMU block with four feet of decorative wrought iron and fence. So, what, as we've extended that fence kind of along both sides of the page to kind of provide a little bit more of an aesthetic break between the properties.
So, in other words, you, you're not blocking the, this facility from the view of the, the houses that are right next to this, this piece of property?
Well, so there's, there's a combination of things happening. You can kind of see along the top of the property, I mean, we have a a significant, like an extremely dense, when you talk about landscape buffers, along the top of the property. So, this includes, you know, various types of evergreens, evergreen shrubs, deciduous shrubs that provides a, a dense screen along the top of the page. We also, you can kind of see on the left-hand side of the page, the bioretention area is significantly planned, and the reason for that is this is not a typical rain garden or bioretention area. Based on the DRCC regulations, this is being planted as a wooded facility. So, we are essentially recreating or replicate, replicating a wooded area in this bioretention area, and that.
Okay, so, okay, so I get that, and, and you're gonna be planting that. That doesn't exist now, correct?
Correct. None of these, none of these plantings that are being shown, shown here in kind of the, the varying colors of green exist now.
Okay. That's all gonna be, that's all gonna be something that's gonna be done in the future.
Was part of the project, not.
Yes.
Not in an undetermined time. It'd be happening as part of the project.
Okay.
Great.
So, how does that? So how does that affect the, and you know, I'm having trouble with this, getting the north and south right. But at the bottom of the picture in the back, you've got twenty-five spaces that are cheek-by-jowl with that fence that you have, that's, that you can visually see through. What's the thinking there?
So the, the, the two feet is block, and then there is a six-foot fence on top of it. So again, the, the bottom is block. Uh, if the, if the board would prefer a solid screen, you know, we've worked with this applicant before, they, we could do a, a kind of a, as a condition of full block, um, screen along those twenty-five spaces, uh, to provide that screening element.
Why not just have a buffer there and not, and, and remove those other twenty-five spaces?
I mean, again, the, the, the screen element, I think, would provide, um, you know, the screening that, that I think you're, you're looking for. But I'm happy, I mean, what I can do, I can, let me kind of continue through the site a little bit, feel free, ask questions away, I'll kind of keep continuing. We can definitely kind of come back to that at the end. Um, I think some of the other, other features, just to touch on, I'll kind of look to, to move, move it a little bit quickly. Um, we do have nineteen parking spaces along the front of the site. You can kind of see those, um, that I'm highlighting on the screen, including ADA, an ADA space as well. I think something important to note is, today, the site is not in ADA compliance. As part of the project, it will be brought into ADA compliance, includes parking and access. We also will be providing an ADA-compliant path to the right-of-way, which I'm highlighting on the screen, that goes from the office area to Route twenty seven. We also are proposing bike racks to kind of encourage, if people are using bike, bikes in the area, that they can use the bike racks in front of the site. I'll zoom in a little bit, but you can kind of see those are near the front of the office. Um, I did speak to the fence, I think one important note, there is a trash enclosure. Trash enclosure is located kind of within the secure area. It's a six-foot-high masonry block trash enclosure. What's important to note is this is a carry-in, carry-out type of a establishment. So people cannot use the trash enclosure, the trash enclosure is locked and it's only for the office employees. So people can't throw things in it, they can't use it for bulk, you know, what you bring in, you have to take out of the facility. That includes the RV or the secured long-term parking area, as well as the building itself. Uh, we are proposing a monument sign along the frontage, which will be fully conforming, including size, height, setback, um, and illumination. Um, just quickly, again, I, I hit that this is a low-impact use. Uh, we did prepare a traffic assessment report, I'm happy to go into more detail if there are questions. But just in terms of, of access and trip generation, we, we are in the process of seeking, um, a letter of no interest from the NJDOT to maintain the two driveways, um, because of how low of a, of a generating use this is. For reference, um, you know, the midday Saturday peak is thirty-eight trips, the weekday PM is twenty-one trips, and the weekday AM is, is only twelve trips. So, and again, a trip counts for a vehicle going in and out. So it's, you know, again, we're, we're talking about a very low amount of trips that are coming in and out of this site. Um, and then again, just from a parking standpoint, we are proposing nineteen spaces. When we look at industry standards, ITE mini warehouse, this, this type of use would really only require twelve-point-one parking spaces, so the nineteen spaces is going to be more than adequate, both for the customers using the space as well as the employees. Um, drive aisles, circulation has been designed to accommodate, you know, kind of the, the, the correct design vehicles, emergency vehicles, and anybody kind of, you know, accessing the site. Um, just operationally, as we continue hours of operation, this is not a twenty-four-hour facility. The hours of operation is the office component, which again is in that right-hand side of the screen, is open from eight AM to six PM daily. And then the, the site itself has secure access from five AM to ten PM, seven days a week. So the, when I say secure access, the site is, um, has exterior doors and keypad. So every customer has their own individual keypad code, so gates, doors, units have a keypad. But what's key to the secure access is that this site is monitored twenty-four-seven. So there's a third-party company that monitors the site, someone cannot, cannot access the site outside of those hours. Doors are locked, their keypad codes won't work as well as this is being monitored. So obviously, if there was someone on the site, you know, past those hours, um, you know, the correct parties or authorities would be notified. These sites are fully secured, so there's high-def cameras around the entire site. Uh, these are monitored, again, twenty-four-seven by a third-party operator. And then when the office is open and when employees are onsite, they are instructed to kind of walk the grounds. And they're looking at two things, A, from a security standpoint, but again, they're walking the grounds to make sure that the grounds are staying cleanly and that customers are kind of obey, obeying kind of the rules of the facility. Um, loading, again, there's not many, there's not many vehicles or trips coming in and out of the site. But from a trash perspective, we expect, you know, a typical trash vehicle, you know, one to two times a week at most. But again, these are typical office ancillary, um, type, uh, trash that's getting picked up. Or you may have an Amazon truck or UPS truck kind of deliver something, you know, once a week. But again, the site's accommodated for much larger vehicles, so there's no issue from a, from a loading and unloading perspective.
Mr. Klein, Josh, while you're going through this, um, it might be worth talking a little bit about, um, when we talk about the canopies and the recreational vehicle storage, and, and I say this because we've addressed a lot of questions over the last few years in, in doing these applications. Um, maybe talk a little bit about how the, um, the usage of that. It's, it's not, you know, when, when people, I think, first see this, they say, oh, man, there's going to be recreational vehicles coming in and out of this, this facility every day. Um, that is not the case. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Correct. So the, the types of vehicles we typically see are, again, are recreational vehicles, boats, you know. So people may be putting their boat in it, you know, moving it once or twice a year. The recreational vehicle, you know, they're, they're coming out here once or twice a year on a big trip. I mean, people are kind of storing, um, you know, long-term vehicles at this location. Again, there's not a commercial component, there's not that daily demand for any of these spaces. People, you know, an electrician can't keep his vehicle here, a plumber can't keep his vehicle here, a landscaper can't keep his trailer here. So these are long-term parking, you know, what we find is someone may, you know, once a summer, take their recreational vehicle for a trip. Or someone, again, you know, they might put their boat in the water and then, and then come back, you know, at the end of boating season and put their boat back. So these are very low-turnover-type spaces. Again, that's, you know, it's long-term parking. And again, one of the big reasons for the covering is, you know, these are, these are high-cost investments that people are storing at these facilities. So we, we provide these canopies to kind of help protect, protect those, um, different types of vehicles from the elements.
So, so the, those, they're under canopies, those vehicles, but the, they're not otherwise secured except by the high-def cameras that are, uh, located on the premises. So if someone were to jump the fence and get into the, the premises, they would have access to the vehicles, assuming that, uh, they weren't discovered as they entered the property, is that correct?
No, I don't believe that's, that's correct. I mean, I think we're, we're maybe jumping a few, I mean, this is an, an eight-foot-high security fence. This site is monitored twenty-four-seven by a third-party company. And these sites are very secure facilities, um, self-storage, I mean.
Basically, what you're saying, you're answering my question, yes, that's the limit of the protection.
Right? You've maybe, you've worded one more, yeah, maybe I'm not following.
No, Mr. Klein, I think, I think we understood the question, yes, this, there's an eight-foot-high fence. Someone were to jump over that fence and then be identified by the, the third party, um, we would hope that the, the police would be there, hopefully soon.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I didn't know, I need to interrupt you, Mr. Klein, um, if you want to continue.
All right, it's no problem. I'll just kind of wrap up with some of the more, more technical engineering items. I think it's always important to note stormwater, this is a major development. It is subject to a review and approval by the DRCC. Uh, we are proposing a combination of pervious pavement. So again, green infrastructure, which you can see is highlighted in red. Um, the final type of pervious paver or permeable pavement hasn't been selected. But again, this will be in accordance with the NJDEP regulations. But if this is designed to soak in the water, hold it back and then slowly release it. So it has a filtering property as well as a quantity reduction to kind of reduce the flow that's coming off the site. And then on the, the left-hand side of the screen, or to the west, where you can see this kind of, um, heavily landscaped area, there's two separate bioretentions facilities. Um, so these facilities, again, are designed to capture water, they filter it through a filter media, filter it through the plant roots, and then, uh, will discharge it, discharge it. So, you know, from a, we're, we're meeting kind of the major development regulations and kind of reducing those peak flows. So we're holding water back on our site, we're filtering it, we're meeting the water quality requirements, and then we're slowly releasing it. Um, additionally, we're proposing lighting as part of the project. There are, there are wall pack fixtures around the building. There are canopy lights that are underneath the canopy structure, there are some canopy lights located on the edge of the canopy structure. I think the important thing to note is, all the lighting is LED, all the lighting is dark sky compliant, all the lighting is downward-facing. Um, I think the original, the application as submitted was requesting a, a waiver for point-two foot candles off-site, uh, illumination where point-one is permitted. That area of point-two was located near Route, Route twenty-seven, so it was up by the commercial property. So again, all of the, the lighting is, is below any requirement. When you look at any of the sides that are facing or abutting the residential zone, there was one area along the Route twenty-seven part, which it was noted in the engineering letter, and the applicant would eliminate that waiver as a condition of approval. Um, and then again, I just wanted to kind of touch on landscaping, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. But I think the big thing to take away here is, we're planting a total of two hundred and eighty-four new trees. Um, so we're making kind of a, a significant improvement in the number of trees that are on site. Um, and additionally, we're plant, planting, you know, over a hundred and ninety shrubs as well. And that doesn't include all the grasses, uh, that are mixed in and all the grasses that you may find in the bioretention area. So there's kind of some significant landscaping, you can see it along the front of the site. You can see landscaping along the edges that are shown in green. And then, again, the bioretention area will kind of have a wooded effect towards the back of the site.
Great. Mr. Klein, does that, uh, conclude your testimony?
Yes.
Yes, wonderful, Mr. Chair.
Okay, normally, we, uh, go through all the witnesses.
Wonderful. So we have another witness, our, our next is Louis Vanderloos. Um, it's our, it's our architect of record for the, um, for the project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vanderloos, would you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could spell your name.
P is in Victor, A-N-D-E-L-O-E-C-H-T.
You can qualify him, Mr. Murphy.
Wonderful, thank you, Counselor. Um, uh, Mr. Vanderloos, uh, for the benefit of the board, can you please provide, uh, an overview of your educational experience and, and professional experience? Um, we'll get you qualified as a, as an expert in the field of architecture.
Certainly, uh, graduated in nineteen ninety-six from Drury University down in Springfield, Missouri. Uh, been practicing as a licensed architect since two thousand and four. Licensed in New Jersey for, I believe, six years. Uh, my license is currently active. Uh, done multiple, uh, self-storage projects there inside the state of New Jersey and testified in front of multiple boards in New Jersey.
Okay, that sounds fun. I lost you for a moment at the beginning, but that's okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Merkely, I, I just want to take a few moments just to remind the public, because we do have a few hands up. Uh, and I just wanted to remind the public or explain to the public that the nature of the hearing and, and how we're going to proceed tonight. Um, with these virtual calls, it's been, or meetings, it's been our experience that it's more efficient to have the, um, applicant present their, all of their testimony first. So that's why the applicant had their engineer, um, they have their architect coming up now. They do have a planner, and I don't know if they have anybody else, but they're going to go through their testimony. Then after the applicant's done with presenting their testimony, then the board and myself, and if the board attorney has any questions, then we're going to ask all of those experts the questions. After that, the public will be given an opportunity to ask questions of every, any, every single, uh, expert that's been provided testimony. So what I would suggest is perhaps have a, a notepad and, and, which I'm doing as well, and I'm sure the board is doing, have a little notepad for questions that you want to ask. After all of those questions are done, then the public will be provided an opportunity to provide comments. Um, so I, I just, again, I wanted to thank you, Chairman, Mr. Murphy, for giving me the opportunity to just explain that so the board, the, the, the public understands what, you know, how we're proceeding tonight. Thank you.
Okay, you can, uh, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Haley, that was, uh, that was helpful. Um, Louis, can you, um, we've, we've qualified you as an expert in the field of, of, of architecture, your license is current and good standing in New Jersey, you've confirmed that. Um, you've reviewed the plans that have been submitted to the board this evening? Okay, wonderful. Are you going to be sharing your screen, the, the plans we submitted?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, if you can, these plans have been submitted, uh, in connection with the original, uh, application submission. Um, can you please provide an overview of the architectural elements of the, of the project? I think we can keep this, uh, testimony, um, rather concise, um, if you could, if you could start that testimony, thank you.
Certainly. Okay, is everybody seeing my screen?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Okay, the sheets here, and it's, it's, I believe, A one through A five that was submitted on, uh, February twenty-third of this year, two thousand and twenty-one. The first sheet you're seeing here is the first floor plan. And what you'll find is that in these self-storage facilities are fairly consistent from, from top to bottom. Um, what you're seeing up here, and just to orient everybody, on the right-hand side is the street side with the parking. Uh, you're seeing the small office here for, for, you know, sales and, and, uh, you know, tape or boxes, wherever they may need that in that space here. Uh, coming down the bottom of the page, you'll see the two loading bays here and here where my mouse is. Uh, right inside of those, the, you'll find the elevators that go up through the, through the self-storage facility. Uh, there's a pair of stairs for e-res only, just for life safety purposes. Um, and then what you're seeing on the rest of the floor is, is a fairly typical self-storage layout. Uh, it's a mix of bringware from, you know, five-foot-by-five-foot units to ten-by-fifteen or ten-by-twenty-foot units that are then rented out. Uh, over the three floors, there's approximately eight-hundred-and-twenty-five units in this. This will shift slightly as we move from where we are now into construction, uh, just based on a final market survey that may do. Nothing about the outside of the building will change, it'll just be interior walls that would adjust as they go forward. Uh, walk our way through the building real quick, uh, this is the second floor plan, A two. Uh, what you're seeing here are the cutouts where the, you know, where the truck is taller than what the floor-to-floor height would be. So we, we eliminate the floor in that area, just so you can get the trucks back in or the vans back in, or whatever it may be. An additional self-storage units that you're seeing, and then on the third floor, uh, sheet A three, it's a full floor of, of rental units. Um, flipping quickly to the elevations. What you're seeing here, it's actually a, a high-quality of material that we're putting onto it, is a split-faced concrete block. It's a brick veneer, it's storefront glass. Um, just to orient everybody, the, the east elevation is a street-facing side, so it's significant glass faces. Um, we, we try to get a lot of glass in those areas, so it kind of breaks up and makes it look more of a, more of an office building look as opposed to a pure box of self-storage. Um, we've got some brick veneer here and some, and some Eiffel stucco pieces. Um, and then you get to the south elevation, which is along the driveway to the back. Same kind of deal, we try to break these facades up so they don't look so, just like big boxes, and they look more like, um, you know, office buildings or small apartment complexes or something like that. You're seeing glass as you come along the face, understanding that kind of from my, where my mouse is going to the right, these are what we call spandrel windows, so you can't see through these windows. Um, mainly because you don't want to be looking in the people's units. So the, they're, they're fake windows, they're there to give kind of texture and, and relief to the building facade. Uh, flipping to the north, or the north elevation, which I believe facing one of the apartment complexes, we kept the same kind of look. Again, we tried to not do just a, a wall of the same material, we tried to give it some rhythm and some, some breakup and some life to the facility. And then the west elevation on the backside is the same, uh, you know, storefront glass with a little bit of breakup on that side. Um, flipping to the last page, A five, we went through and presented some elevations and renderings of the sod, uh, just to run through them real quick, so I can give a little more relief. I think the relief on the rendering really helps bring out, uh, you know, what the building's really looking like.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, this is, Mr. Murphy, do you mind zooming in on that a little bit more? I don't know if any of the other board members are having, yeah, there you go.
No, bear, no problem. So what you're seeing here is you're seeing glass on the two corners, the office here on the left, uh, the parking as you go down the side on the, on, sorry, office on the right, parking as you go down on the left. Uh, the one difference between these windows is, we kind of call these display windows. Um, there is a small walkway that runs behind these, these are vision glass, so they're see-through, to where you, people. To where you people can drive by and they can see kind of the doors and and of the units. Understanding that these are not real doors, they're they're kind of fake doors, people can at least get a sense of feel of what's going on inside the facility. Um, you're seeing here the mix of the the brick and stone uh over uh facade overlays that we're doing here with the stucco on the side. And we've introduced some some metal canopy elements, again, to provide some relief and some some life to the front of the buildings. Um, flipping down, this is a view from kind of the southeast corner. Looking at that same side, we also introduce, these are the doors into loading bays. We introduce some canopies, again, they're they're not there for necessarily weather protection, they're there for aesthetics and to kind of bring bring some relief to the face of the building. Uh, again, just running through the last one that probably makes sense is looking down the northeast corner, again, looking at the office. And then this is the side that runs along north elevation that I believe is up against the apartment complex. So in a nutshell, that's that's the that's the building. And you know, there's we try to make give it a little bit of of character to it, but also understanding that at the end of the day, it's a self storage facility.
Wonderful, thank thank you, Mister Vanderloos, that that concludes your track testimony?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great, well, uh, we will call, if it's okay with the chairman, we'll call you back if we need to later.
Actually, I I'd just like to ask him a couple of quick questions.
Absolutely.
Um, how wide is the building?
Let me flip back to our floor plan here. We're ninety one foot, ninety one foot four, outside the outside.
Okay, and how tall is it?
The height of the building is, let me flip their elevations, we had dimensions, we are thirty five feet to the top of the parapet at the front of the building.
From, sorry. To the top of what?
The top of the parapet.
What is a parapet?
The it's the top of the wall, essentially, so our floor to floor height, so from first floor to second floor and second floor to third floor is eleven foot. And then our top floor is thirty feet, roughly three feet from there to where the roof would be. And then we handle the the roof slopes to handle the drainage, which is why the third floor is a little taller. And then we have another foot on top of that for relief at the front elevation, to terminate our roofing membranes, to provide a little bit of screening if we need it, something like that.
Okay, so it's a it's a small wall that goes above the the roof line?
Correct, correct.
All right, and could you go back to the the renderings that you you showed? Right, there's the one, that's the one, can you make that larger again? It is that what the fence is going to uh to look like around this facility?
I will say that's representative of what the fence would look like, trying to match the, you know, the exact fence. We tried to get as close as we can with our rendering software, but it's in.
I was more, I was more interested in the fact that there doesn't seem to be any gate to that fence that people can just enter the uh uh the storage facility in their car and and try and access the the uh uh, the recreational vehicles that are toward the rear unless there's some gate back that way.
I I'll be honest, I would want to look at Mister Klein's drawing, we may, it's been long enough since we've looked at this, we may have inadvertently left that out.
We can have Mister Klein answer that question, Commissioner, if that's if that you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, so there there is a gate uh towards the back of the building, I can just flip. I don't.
Mister uh Mister Vanderloos, you might be able to close your plans out at this point first, so I can let Josh reshare his.
It still hasn't given me the ability to share. But again, if you're if while it's hopefully giving me the ability, if you go to the, if you start on the route twenty seven side of the building and work your way to the left side of the plan, you'll see at the back of the building, there's two gates, there's one to the top and there's a gate to the bottom, so there's a gate, again, that provides that secure access and makes that entire recreational or long term storage and parking area completely secure.
It might, Josh, it might be helpful to show that, is is Christine, is there a way to to?
Yeah, I just, I just. He is his permission now.
All right, perfect. So again, just following what I was talking about, front of the building, working away to the back, you'll see that there are two secured gates on both the top as well as the bottom of it.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Klein. Uh, Mister Chair, if there's no other questions, we can move on to our professional planner, and then we could readdress any um any issues.
Sounds like that's fine. Go ahead.
Counselor Cray, uh, Mister Craig Rayn Camp is our is our professional planner, if we want to swear him in.
Frank Camp, can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give uh will be the truth, but nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, if you could just spell your name.
It's Creigh, C R E I G H, Rand Camp, R A H E N K A M P.
Mister uh counselor, we gave you uh easy names with uh Ryan Camp and Vanderloos. I I can share them via email with you after, if you'd like.
No, it's fine.
Um.
Is my audio okay, let me just check in technology first, you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mister uh Chairman and Counselor, can I can I swear my, uh, excuse me, not swear, can I uh qualify my expert?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Great, Mister Rand Camp, um, uh, if you could provide a, what I know needs to be an abbreviated version of your of your history and work and an education, thank you.
Yeah, I promise I'll keep it short. Um, been in the field for thirty nine years, licensed in New Jersey for twenty five, license is currently valid. Qualified in over a hundred hearings and trials in the state of New Jersey, served as a court appointed master lecturer at Rowan, VP of our professional association.
I think that sounds.
Here before planning and zoning boards around the state.
Okay.
That's okay.
License is good. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mister Chair, Mister Rand Camp, you you, I'm assuming you you have already confirmed, you've re reviewed, the plans have been submitted, you've reviewed the zoning ordinance, the master plan uh, and anything else in connection with this application?
I have.
Great, um, for the benefit of the board, can you please provide uh planning testimony related to to the the variance relief being sought this evening and um and go from there?
I will, and while it's a use variance, the the reasoning behind it's very straightforward, I won't take too long. Um, administratively, when we first adopt the testimony for Josh Klein and Louis Vanderloos, as if I gave it, so there've been some squirrely court decisions about the wrong person saying something, I'm relying on it, if I heard them saying it, I'm not going to repeat it. Um, so let me do that first. Um, and Mister Healy has a lot of the project description site background in his memo of October twenty first, and I'll try not to be duplicative. Uh, just by way of quick background, we are in the cluster residential zone. Obviously, the purpose of this zone is providing residential housing uh with an emphasis on being inclusionary. Um, however, we're a very small site, five point seven eight acres, um, and as you heard from Josh, three hundred feet wide. Um, a very difficult site to develop for a significant residential use, uh, which is what creates the the issue and the reason why this is a a site looking for a use that makes sense. We are, as has been said, along Route twenty seven, um, the zoning sort of bounces in and out of residential and general business on almost a track by track basis in this area. We are bounded immediately by residential, uh, but then the next use is out from them along Route twenty seven or business. Um, so this will fit in into that character. As you know, a use variance comes in three parts, um, without using the magic words yet, why it makes sense? Can we do it, do it without obstructing other good public policies? And can we do it fairly in the neighborhood? So let me deal with those first special reasons. I would suggest to you that there are three. Um, purpose I, which is the uh place we planners go when we're doing revitalization or redevelopment. Uh, Burbidge V Mine Hill is the important case in this area. And essentially, we are replacing a preexisting nonconforming use uh that is more intense in terms of activity and coverage, shorter front yard setback, no side yard setbacks at all. Um, in terms of landscaping where there are piles of of material are and the like. Um, so basically, we we are reducing the intensity and extent of nonconformity uh that exists on the site and bringing it into greater zoning conformance, even though it requires a D one to do so. The second I would suggest is purpose M, which is the efficient use of land. Um, as I said, is a three hundred foot wide uh lot, long and narrow. Um, this is going to be a very difficult site to use for inclusionary housing in the future. Um, it it really isn't furthering the purposes of of the CR zone uh the way it actually sits in the landscape. Um, self storage is a much more flexible use, as you saw, we could morph our building into something long and narrow, something you couldn't typically do with retail or with an office um, or with large multifamily buildings that are trying to get parking in the area. Um, so this is a building that can be made to fit uh the the confines of this particular lot. And as it relates to our storage of RVs and boats in the back, um, I would suggest under Medici, this is a relatively new use, not that it hasn't been going on historically. Um, but the idea that it would be co-located with self storage is relatively new. Um, it would provide, as a practical matter, relief for your zoning officer who's running around telling people they can't park these things in their yards or on residential streets, there'll be a place in your community where they can go in a legal, appropriate, safe, clean, monitored way um, and reduce the pressure on people trying to fit them in around their houses on streets uh and and playing dodgeball with the uh zoning officials trying to get these things out of neighborhoods. Um, so I think this is a a good and beneficial use that helps in that way. As you've heard, it's a relatively uh low intensity use, both for the building and for the vehicle storage to the rear. Um, as Josh was explaining, the storage of vehicles in the rear, there is power so that batteries can get be kept warm for long periods of storage. But there is no ability or permission for people to engage in repair work, maintenance work, nobody's changing the oil, working on an engine in that space. They're monitored by cameras, if somebody tries it, uh, they're going to hear from management very quickly. Um, and one thing you don't often hear with self storage, this actually has op hours of operation. This is not a place where a customer can show up in the middle of the night and do whatever on their own. Uh, there are actual real operate operating hours uh where they will have access. Um, we're talking about why the canopy, um, that's a simple one, sun kills fiberglass. So if you want to store an RV or a boat, you want to get it out of the direct sun. It's not so much the temperature um as that direct sun, so that's why it's a canopy, it doesn't need to be a fully enclosed garage, but you do need to keep the sun off these uh very expensive toys, uh, I think as Mister Klein put it. Um, in terms of the second prong intent or the second point, um, intent and purpose of the zone plan, can we do this without frustrating some other policy? As I said, this is not a very useful CR uh site in terms of your residential uh development strategy. Under T W C reality, the kinds of the things we'd be looking at, it's a relatively small part of your zone, we're not fundamentally changing uh the land use pattern in your community, the adjoining lands can continue to be used as zoned, it's not interrupting uh the ability of other lands to be used as zoned. And it's not generally inconsistent with the pattern of land uses along Route twenty seven, which is already, as been said a couple of times, a mix. Can it be done without detriment to the neighborhood? Um, it's worth reminding everyone that the existing use out there um doesn't have uh landscaping buffers anywhere near the kind of security that this will have, fencing. Um, so it's a substantial improvement um in virtually every direction. Uh, as I said, a low intensity use, Josh went over the walls and and landscaping that are being proposed around the edge. Um, I think you saw the building is is an attractive building, setback much further from Route twenty seven than the current low building and outdoor display and store uh sale of goods. Um, let's see. Um, Mister Healy has listed a number of of C two variances. Um, with regard to those, I would simply say two things. Um, one is the it's a D one application as shown. Um, so in some sense, we are subsuming whatever bulk relief is into the D one. Uh, but more specifically related to the C two um um variances from from the CR zone, I would say that the relief being requested um is the least relief able that we need to achieve this particular use. Um, obviously, it's a narrow lot, we need to have circulation. So Josh went through very intense uh design steps to create buffers and landscaping, but at the end of the day, can't have fifty foot landscaping on both sides and still have a use on a three hundred foot wide lot. So the shape and configuration of the lot requires some relief as to the uh side bufferings uh that would be required. And with that, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mister Rand Camp, uh, Mister Chair.
It's up to you, you have any more witnesses?
Uh, we do not at this point, we're we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, board members, any questions?
Um, I have a few more for the planner. Um, I guess my first question is, are there any other three story buildings in um the immediate location?
Mister Ring, you may be on mute.
I don't, I think, can you hear me, I think I'm okay.
No, now we can.
Yeah, all right, I think I was just being quiet for a second, I've got the aerial up on my side monitor. Uh, I I was quickly looking to see if there are three story buildings. Um, there is a, there are a series of multi story office buildings to the northeast. Um, not immediately adjacent to the site, but it would be a similar height uh within the overall neighborhood.
And um you said that uh I am particularly concerned about the area um in the um uh the vehicle storage portion uh where there is virtually no uh no buffering uh for the small spaces. And um do you think that somehow uh that's not going to be a problem for the uh the people who are living literally a stone's throw away from the edge of the property?
Well, there's virtually no buffer now, and in the aerials that we've looked at historically on Google Earth, there is a parking of semi trailers literally within feet of that particular property line. So in terms of what's going in, it's a vast improvement on what's been happening there in the past, number one. Number two, there's already a fairly significant landscape buffer on the multifamily side. They had the the, it looks like the fifty foot uh setback on their side that they've respected. So this is not a situation where we've got, for example, a single family rear yard coming up to the property line. There actually already is a fairly wide landscaped area um on the other side of the property line in that area. So I don't think we're going to be disturbing anybody's bedroom, anybody's quiet time uh based on these long term parked vehicles. Um, if board preferred that the wall be a wall instead of a fence to get a little bit more visual screening, I would not be opposed to that. Um, but in terms of the use itself and its infrequency, I think it's far more attractive than what's there, is reasonably buffered by the distance that's provided by what's built there, um, that I think will protect it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a few. Um, on the environmental commission report or um evaluation, they say they require they uh requires a new state regulation that EV charger with capability of two vehicles at the same time. Uh, and then one each of of the next two, three year anniversaries, is this a new law?
Mister Rich, this is Mister, oh, I'm sorry, this is uh counsel for the applicant, Mister Rich, this is a new law, it was passed um uh and signed into into law this year by by the governor. Um, we will comply with it as we're required to, as will, quite frankly, every development throughout the state.
Okay, all right. On that same report or whatever, they talk about removal of ninety one trees and replanting is specified at two hundred and ninety one trees in the application. So is the application different than what we have had testimony to, or?
I can, I can, Mister Rich, I'll have Josh Klein, our our engineer, step in for this question, I I think he has a sufficient answer, Josh, can you? Josh, you may be muted.
I just unmuted muted, I'm I'm confirming the table, I I can't speak if the if the report may be uh may have miscounted the trees. So, again, we're we're proposing, as shown on on the plans as submitted, sheet C ten, um, we're proposing two hundred and eighty four trees. So it includes evergreen flowering and deciduous. So I don't think it's as much as from the initial submission.
Okay, all right, I believe it was you that said something about everything on the you were gonna, I I don't know how you phrased that, but you were going to comply with everything that was on the reports, or?
That is correct, Mister Rich, if, to clarify for the record, we we did say, the engineering letter um comments nine and eleven of that report. Um, we did spe, we did clarify that those will be worked out with the the board professionals following a a a hopefully an approval as a condition of approval, but everything else, Josh, um, we can confirm that we will comply with, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Traffic safety, you don't have a traffic person uh making a report, do you?
Mister Klein is a is a licensed professional engineer and an expert in traffic?
Then the Franklin Township uh Police Traffic Safety Bureau had a report too that said driveway and work of driveway designs and all work on the public R O W for New Jersey Route twenty seven. Driveway designs and all work on the public ROW for New Jersey Route 27 must be approved by the New Jersey DOT. That's, that's still. That's done that, correct?
That's correct. Uh, Mr. Rich and Mr. Klein, if you can confirm, um, those, we, we do need a permit from DOT that's in the process. And, um, will be a condition of this approval, correct?
Correct. Any, any permit from DOT would be provided.
Okay, and then also in the Franklin Township Office of Fire Prevention, they're talking about the gate. And they must be equipped with, uh, with a siren activated device. Is that, I never heard any mention of that. Is that, is that something that's being done too?
Correct. We would comply with all their comments.
Okay. All right. And my last question is going to be, you notified everybody within 200 feet of the property. Does that include North Brunswick also?
That, Mr. Rich, that does include North Brunswick. So we have a 200-foot list from, um, North Brunswick Township. Those residents were notified. We also notified the clerk, um, of that township pursuant to the municipal land use law, correct?
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
If I might revise my answer on the height, I had a chance to research it a little bit further. The buildings I was referring to are actually two-story buildings, not three. They're in the GB zone, which has a 30-foot height, uh, limit. Uh, so they look like they were built to that zone's height limit at 30. In the zone that we are in, the residential zone, it's a 35-foot height, uh, which we comply with.
That's correct. So to, to confirm for the, for the board, we, we are seeking, um. There is a, I believe, a building height, uh, variance, it's a C variance, not a D variance. And it has to do with the number of stories, not the number of feet. That's for the record.
Okay, uh, Mark, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a number of questions. Um, well, first I'll, I'll make a recommendation, which is, uh, I would recommend that the, if, if the board was inclined to approve this, that the fence be. Either a solid fence or wall. Um, they are seeking a variance from the buffer requirements. The buffer requirements are 50 feet. And in that case, the, you know, the buffer requirements are applicable to residential uses, and this is, um, a commercial use adjoining. Residential uses. So I think every opportunity that the board can impose to optimize or maximize the amount of screening that's provided to the surrounding residences should be. Required. Um, that is my recommendation on that issue. Um, question for the board, I'm sorry, for the applicant's engineer, um, and I believe you have the ability to share your screen.
I do not at the moment.
Okay.
And Mr. Klein, before you, uh, before you answer the question, can you confirm that we will add that additional screening if the board does? Uh, would like that as a condition of approval?
Yes, I can confirm that.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Healy, didn't mean to cut you off.
Nope, that's fine. Um, thank you for the clarification. Um, so if you could bring up the site plan and in particular the gate that's in the back. So it looks like it goes along the back of the building. What happens if somebody was to try to access that area and either out of hours or if they're, for some reason their fob didn't work? What, what do they do?
So again, it's a, it's a key code, not a fob, so you won't have that type of malfunction. But again, if the, the office is open, they could call the office and the office, it has a override, so the gate can be overridden by the office. They could also call, um, the office number. Uh, but again, if they're, if they're outside of those main hours, um, and again, people aren't driving to the back of the facility to kind of look at it. But again, if they were to get back there, the gate, you know, for some reason they forgot their, their code number, they can call the office and the office would open the gate and let them circulate and leave the site.
Okay, I mean, this isn't a huge issue and this would be, you know, uh, it may or may not ever occur, but, but why couldn't the gate be moved? To the others, to the, I'd say the backside or further back so that they could loop around the building. They wouldn't be stuck. There's that long, very long driveway. And if they can't get through, they'd have to back several hundred feet out.
Well, we wanted to provide adequate room for vehicles to kind of, again, circulate around the canopy area, emergency vehicles. Um, as well as vehicles kind of backing in and out of these spaces. So by providing the gates where they are, it gives more than adequate room. And again, that this is, it, it is a, you know, this operator has, has operated and built and, and had silk facilities approved across the country as well as in New Jersey. I mean, it's a very common orientation. Again, there's, there's not many vehicles going in and out. I mean. You know, you may never have more than one vehicle, you know, driving around this, this canopy at one time. So again, the, the location, I don't think will, you know, in my opinion, as a traffic and site civil engineer, you know, won't create any, any issue with circulation around the site.
All right, I, I'll move on. And that, that, I don't see that as a significant issue anyway. Um, the lighting, um, so we have two general lighting standards in the town and one is for. What, what are called basic uses and another one for areas of enhanced security. Um, in my experience here reviewing plans, the uses that, that ask for enhanced security are those type uses that have. A higher amount of traffic and a higher amount of the public traversing through the site. So for example, shopping centers usually would have. Um, you know, in the neighborhood of two to three-foot candle on average. Whereas, um, lower traffic uses and certainly, uh, a use like this, I mean, that's part of your testimony. It's well established that self-storage is a very low traffic generating use. So I guess the question is, why do you have higher lighting similar to a shopping center as opposed to, um. An area with lower traffic?
Well, you know, when you, when we look at industry standards for lighting and you look at security lighting, security lighting is typically at, at elevated levels. So again, we're, uh, we're not upwards of what you would find at a bank ATM, um, or something of that nature is in terms of security. But we do, we, we do need to provide security in these secured areas. So. You know, one of the big things we're doing here is why we're going with dark stack compliant, why we're going with downward facing LEDs. So we're kind of directing the light downward, we're eliminating that glow effect, we're kind of containing that light into the site. So. Again, I, the, the lighting is, is kind of focused within the secure areas, um, in kind of in order to not create a disturbance to what's around us.
Is there anything that could be done, uh, for example, lowering the mounting heights that would reduce the potential for, uh, light spillage onto adjoining properties?
Again, the, the lights wouldn't be able to be lowered just due to the, the vehicles that are on the site. But the, the applicant, um, could look to use motion sensors during off-peak hours. Um, and use dimmers. So we could take the light levels down slightly, you know, outside of the, outside of the operating hours. Um, and put the lights on motion sensors.
And we, Mr. Healy, we'd be, we'd certainly willing to do that as a condition of approval. We've done in other projects as well, where after hours, those lights are dimmed.
Okay, um, my memo raises the requirement of section 112 104, size of the loading berth. That it's required to be twice the length of the overall vehicle expected to use the facility. Um, so could, could you identify what size vehicle would be using the loading docks and if they can make the, the turning movements to, to use that area?
Correct. So there's, there's different design vehicles that are using the sites. We do have 40-foot internal climate control loading areas. So those could accommodate an SU40. And again, what we expect and what we see at these facilities is your typical U-Haul vehicle. And their U-Haul's largest vehicle is about 28 feet, but most people are using their 20, 22-foot box truck, if not smaller. But again, the, the site is designed to accommodate, you know, not only large emergency vehicles such as a fire truck. But as well as, you know, we've designed it to accommodate a 45-foot Ashtoe bus to kind of show that a large vehicle could easily circulate the site. Um, and then again, we would, we, we have shown that a WB50 or the site has the ability for a WB50 tractor trailer. Easily circulate the site.
Okay, um, comment eight, I had a couple of comments about, um, traffic circulation. You, you, you have a. I believe you have a one-way, one of the driveways is one-way in, the other one is one-way out. Is that correct?
Correct. We're currently showing an ingress and egress driveway.
Okay, so can you describe how you're going to, uh, enforce that in terms of signage and, uh, pavement markings?
I, I believe there was comments in the board engineer's letter. I mean, we would work. Again, we're looking to work with the board professionals. If there's a certain sign they'd like to see, we're happy to provide it. But, you know, typically what we find, which is, I mean, very common along state highways is you would have a kind of a, you know, do not enter sign at your egress driveway. And then you may have like a one-way sign located at, at Route 27. But if there's a particular sign that you'd like to see, the traffic safety department or the police department would like to see, or the board engineer, it's a condition of approval. We would work with any and all departments kind of on signage for both those entrances.
Okay, so, uh, it, it, again, if the board was inclined to approve this, I, I would be comfortable with something similar to that, uh, as a condition of the approval. The applicant working that out with the consultant and staff. Um, my last comment is, 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 and I, I do address this in my report as well. Is that I, I, I share the same comment that Mr. Shepherd has raised with respect to that one particular, um. Car or vehicle storage area in the, I'll just call it the lower right-hand, uh, side of the site plan that you can see on your screen. Um, there's a 50-foot, I mean, you can, I think the site plan kind of shows it. I mean, I think the applicant has. Given the size of the, the width of the lot and the nature of the use, I think the applicant has made an effort to. You know, have a buffer around the, the, the rest of the, the site. And then in that one section, there's basically no buffer whatsoever. Um, it, and that, that, and that requires a lot of variances. I, I, I don't know if the applicant has necessarily provided any reasoning other than they want it. Um, the buffering talks about a 50-foot wide buffer, talks about preserving trees. There are, there are trees in that area. Um, and it talks about providing a landscape buffer between uses. Um, and there's building setback variances related to that as well, as well as building coverage and imperious coverage variances. That all relate to that, that, all relate to that area. The elimination of that area would reduce variances and eliminate some variances.
Mr. Healy, I, I, um, and I'm going to have Josh answer the question, but. Josh, I, I know we can eliminate that area and I know we're, we're not here, um. And I'm a land use lawyer, so I understand very well that, uh, I'm very well aware of the fact that, that, um. You know, economic viability of a project is not, is not used to determine whether something should be granted. Um, so I, but I do know that as a practical matter, we cannot purely eliminate that area. Is there anything we can do there? To buffer this, to, to change it at all, to, to make it work?
Yes, and so we, we looked at this, um, and kind of talked about it as with the applicant. So what we could do is we could increase that area by seven feet. So we'd, we'd more than double it, we'd add an additional two feet. So what we would be able to do is something similar to what you're seeing at the top of the page. So we would increase this area, the buffer in this area by seven feet. And that would allow us to continue a row of evergreen plantings, arborvitae, mount hollies, you know, we're talking dense. Um, high-growing, quick-growing evergreen. So it's a condition of approval. Again, what we would do is, is shrink the drive aisles. We've already made sure that the drive aisles can accommodate those vehicles that I, I spoke to earlier. And what we'd be able to do is increase and provide seven feet of additional space along here to bring this, this area up to 12.7. And now what we'd be able to do is similar as you see to the top of the screen, is we'd provide a evergreen planting row along that entirety. So not only, we'd still, we'd still have that fence with a two-foot parapet and the decorative wrought iron. Now we'd have an additional seven feet where we could plant again an arborvitae, green giant or a mount holly, but basically a fast-growing dense evergreen. So we'd basically be able to kind of now, um, create this, this buffering or this dense evergreen screen all year round, kind of around the entirety of the secured area.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
But you, well, just to be clear, I, I, you just mentioned just now the wrought iron, but I believe you had agreed there would be a solid wall or fence?
I think we're, I mean, we're kind of adding maybe to that condition. So we could, we would also make it solid if the board as well. And again, in addition to that, we would add seven feet in a row of evergreens along that side. So we're happy to make it, to make it solid and then on top of that, increase it and infill it with a dense evergreen screen.
All right, I, I'll leave it to the board to decide what, uh, which way to go.
But just to be clear, for the record, as a condition of approval, the applicant would agree to, to set that back an additional seven feet. The fence would still go up, whether the board wants a, a solid fence or, or wrought iron fence, um, we are comfortable either way. Um, there would then be in that seven-foot buffer, there would be, uh, plantings of evergreen densely. Um, a dense tree set of some sort that would be worked out, um, between our engineer and the, and the board, um, professionals. I mean, that would be a condition of approval.
Okay, any more questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just have one. I, the, the, all of the move in and move out in the storage building, it is all done via the interior loading. There's no parking in a car and, and bringing something in, or is that permitted also?
Correct. Someone could, could walk in, you know, in, in to their vehicle. But again, the location of the elevators, even if they had a, a car or truck, they would still use and they would be directed to those internal docks. It's just much easier, much closer to the elevators. And again, if someone had one small box, they might park in their space, grab their box and walk in. But anyone kind of unloading or loading is really going to use those internal loading docks because they're the closest distance to the elevators. There is also a door in the back, so someone could park in the striped area in the back and load through the back of the building. But kind of everything is, is contained within the site.
For the record, I just wanted to jump on, uh, what Josh had said. Um, I use self-storage for my records. I could pull up in my car, walk in with a case bag and walk out with a case bag. So we don't want to prohibit people from going to their units from a car, uh, but nobody's going to do heavy loading in that way.
And there's four interior spaces, interior loading spaces?
Correct.
All right. And one other question, because Mr. Rand Camp mentioned this, I don't know if I, if I didn't hear you mention it, about power to the rear. Uh, you know, uh, large vehicle storage area?
Yeah, there's electrical power in that area to allow batteries to be kept warm. Uh, if you've had an RV or a boat, um, storing a battery without power to it, uh, tends to drain the battery over time and creates all kinds of problems. So there's enough power back there that, that these batteries can be, uh, connected and charged. Um, but that's the only use of that power. Nobody can use power tools or equipment or anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I had a question, if, if I may, um, Mr. Klein, um. During your stormwater testimony, you had mentioned the use of permeable pavers or pervious pavement, um, one, one of the two. Um, on, on the top side of the building, did you have the permeable pavers along the edge of the building? Did I see that correctly?
Screen. So what we've done, and I'll zoom in a little bit, there is a slight gap between the building and a curb line. So the pavers are up against the building, they're about, I believe it's, I think it's 12 inches. There's like a 12-inch space where the curb is. And what we've done is we've located the, the permeable surface on both sides of the drive aisle. And then again, you can see in red, the permeable surface, uh, is located kind of within the parking area in the drive aisle in front as well.
What, once the water infiltrates down through the permeable pavement, would it not just rest against the foundation of the building?
No. No, so there's, it's a great question, um, especially, you know, now with kind of the new NJDP regulations and the use of permeable pavement becoming a lot more prominent. Um, there's an underdrain system located within the pavement. So when it does filter through, it would be collected through the underdrains and then discharged into the stormwater system.
Yeah, but it's after.
Designed it with.
As it infiltrates down, it'll be against the building.
No, it would be picked up in the underdrains and, and sent away from the building.
The underdrains are at the bottom of the, of the, the medium, right? So you have your paper and, and then the, the, the pipe at the bottom. And you have a permeability rate at the water infiltrates down, correct?
Correct.
You have standing water against the building.
Well, we're, we're about 12 inches off the building. I mean, foundations are waterproof. It's something, I mean, again, this, it's a very common practice. There won't be any, we have no concerns from a structural standpoint. And again, we, we have a full team of, of professionals as we go to construction. It's a very common orientation. But again, there's, there's overflow inlets that are there, um, so that during higher intensity storm events, we're in the case of, you know, if there's any, if, uh. If, you know, water was dumped or something, it could be, it'd be picked up by the overflow. There's, the underdrains have been sized to adequately be able to pick up the storm. So water wouldn't be sitting against the foundation of the building. And then again, this type of building would have a foundation drain, um, so water wouldn't be sitting against the foundation. You know, there is a, a way for that, for any type of water, again, in that case, to be kind of brought away from the foundation.
So you have a, a foundation drain in your stormwater design?
No, it's not typically, it's, it's a construction element that would be in the structural engineering plans.
It, it, uh, it doesn't sound typical to me. Um, I would just ask you guys to kind of re-review that. Um, but moving on, um, so normally how long, um, would a customer typically spend within a facility like this?
You know, I, I think we've, there's, there's all different times because people have, you know, different amount of things, you know, to, to Craig's point, our, our professional planner, you know. He, you might be walking in just a file, so you might be there for a couple of minutes or you. Or you might be there, you know, kind of loading up your unit for the first time, so it could be a 30, 40-minute visit. But again, it's, you know, it's a one-and-done type element, you know, you have that one big move-in, and then you might not come back for three, four, five, six months to your unit. But there's more than in terms to accommodate any customers to the site.
Do you believe you can fill an entire unit in 30 minutes?
I think it depends on the size of the unit, but yes, definitely.
And if that was a little bit longer, you know, it's not restricted to 30 or 40 minutes. I think that, you know, I understand the point completely. I think that we're not restricting someone to that, but from our, this, our client builds self-storage facilities throughout the country, so we have a lot of data on kind of how much time people spend and it's been used in testimony. And we just, they just see that it's between, you know, 30, 40 minutes is kind of the length of a long trip, but.
No, because this is just leading to my next question. So in your traffic report, Mr. Klein, I'm sure you reviewed that. What was your peak trip generating rate on the weekends?
So the Saturday midday, just to pull up, since we are getting to the exact, so the Saturday midday peak is 38 trips.
How many in?
I'll pull the report.
It's 22, 22 in, 16 out. How many parking spaces do you have on site?
So we have 19 parking spaces.
That seems problematic to me.
Well, when you're looking at IT, it's not just people parking. Like when we're looking at trip generation results, you're not looking at vehicles in doesn't equal parking spaces.
So then what would they be doing on the site?
Plus your, plus four loading spaces, plus people coming to park in the RV and boats. It works.
So even if all 22 vehicles were looking for a place to go, there's more than adequate space to accommodate them. But again, trip generation, it's not looking at trip generation, vehicles in doesn't equal parking spaces. You may have a vehicle coming to the site to drop an employee off. You may have a vehicle that's coming to the.
But how many employees are working at any point in time?
Two.
Two to three employees.
And eight-hour shifts, the numbers just don't add up to me, just pointing it out. Moving on, we had the planner.
Can you comment on that? This is Kelly McCombe, the applicant.
Sure.
Kelly, 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 we're going to need to get you sworn in if you're going to make a comment.
Oh, well, then never mind.
Let's, yeah.
If I have to later, I forgot, I'm sorry.
And I had one last question, and it was for the planner, and I apologize. Are we swearing in, Kelly?
Mr. Reagan, I don't think we're swearing our applicant in right now.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm going to put your name, but for the planner.
Hey, you works for me.
Yes, we'll go with that. You had mentioned that the use change would be reduction in intensity. How do you quantify that?
Informally, by looking at the aerial and the area of the site that's currently occupied by activity, that's essentially property line to property line in terms of clearing piles of material, truck parking, almost the entirety of the site is being used. And in terms of having been by the operation on this site, not infrequently, it can be a busy site in the appropriate seasons, far busier than you would expect a self-storage facility to be.
Do we have any data numbers, parking, trip generation numbers to support the existing use to demonstrate on some quantifiable level that it is a reduction in intensity?
No, I did not go out and count people in the existing store in season.
And I did not see that in the traffic report, Mr. Klein, unless I missed it.
Correct, that type of study is not located in a traffic assessment report.
I've seen existing counts on projects before, but fair enough, it's not in the report. No more questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more board questions, then I think it's appropriate to open to the public.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, are we, is this going to be for questions of the public, or can they do questions and statements at this?
I think we could try and do both.
Okay.
We'll swear them in and deal with each person.
Okay, all right, so to the reminder to the public, we do have a few hands up. But to remind the public that if you're on WebEx and you want to participate, click on the participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. If you're calling in, press star three. I'll bring in each person, and one at a time, we'll ask you to provide your name and your address, spell your last name, and then the board attorney will swear you in. After you're done speaking, I ask that you please use the lower hand function. If you're on WebEx, press the lower hand button, that'll be on your screen, and if you're calling in, press the star three. That way I can properly track who's still waiting to speak. So the first person is a call-in number. I'll just identify them by the beginning of their phone number if I can. 732-718. Okay, go ahead, if you can provide your name, address, and spell your last name, please.
Yes, my name is Denise Bourcheid, B-O-U-R-S-C-H-E-I-D. I'm a resident at Kingsbury Drive number 31.
Could you just raise, obviously we can't see you, but can you just raise your hand, your right hand? And do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have just several questions. The lighting was one of my biggest concern, and I know that it was discussed about motion sensors possibly being used. Can that be agreed upon, that that's all happening in the evening?
That would be correct, Ms. Bourcheid.
Okay, correct, that's great. Start date of construction?
Sir, I would have to defer to, Josh, you know the answer to that? If not, we'll have to swear in our applicant, but Josh, do you have an answer for that?
I think it will largely depend on our timeline with DRC. But I'd like to think if everything went well, it could be, you know, summer of 2022.
Okay, and how long will it take to complete?
I believe it's about two years.
Two years for construction?
That's everything, that's kind of from start to finish to opening. So there's a lot of work that is done kind of on the interior of the building, majority of that time.
Right, will construction be between certain hours?
Correct, construction would comply with any local requirements. And again, our applicant would work with the police department, the building official, the township as a whole, to make sure that we're kind of in compliance throughout.
And Mr. Klein, just, I don't mean to interrupt, but Ms. Bourcheid, I did get confirmation from my client that it's actually a bit of a shorter construction period, it's about 12 to 14 months, so.
Okay, now, when it's under construction, will there be any kind of fencing provided to secure that site area?
Yes.
But none of the landscaping will be completed by that point, or even started?
Josh, if you want to answer that question, but I would assume, and then you can confirm this, that the landscaping is done while it's done at the same time. It can't necessarily be done until the building's done, right? Because you don't want to be burning the landscaping. Is that correct, Josh?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Oh, one other question. Thank you.
Is that all? Okay, if I can ask you, press star three again to put your hand down, thank you. Okay, I have Chip Hoover. Okay, Mr. Hoover, if you can identify yourself, spell your last name, and provide your address, please. Mr. Hoover? You're unmuted, Mr. Hoover, if you want to speak. All right, why don't we come back to him? Okay, Mark Rothberg. Mr. Rothberg?
Yes, how are you? I apologize, I don't know why the video is not going through. But anyway, I represent Hempstead Gardens apartment with regard to this application. And my client, as you had stated, is directly south and to the rear of the property in question with over 276 residential garden apartments in the development. I'll just first state that we're against this proposed development as it negatively impacts our client's community. And I do have several questions for the engineer, Mr. Klein, with regard to his testimony. Mr. Klein, if you would please bring up for view the aerial photograph that you initially had shown the board with your testimony.
No problem.
Thank you.
Aerial exhibit marked as A1.
Okay, now, where you see it says Hempstead Drive and the project site goes basically through to the left portion of the photograph. Is that the Hempstead Garden Apartments that my client currently has?
I believe, I don't know your client, but yes, that is Hempstead.
That's the Hempstead, that is the Hempstead Garden Apartments with 276 units. Let's go to the right of it where it shows Kingsbury Drive. Is that a townhouse community with residential townhomes?
That is Kingsbury Acres.
Okay, and Kingsbury Acres is a residential townhome community, correct?
Correct, it's a residential use.
And for the record, counsel, we've stated on the record multiple times that this is surrounded by residential.
I get it, and the witness also testified that the area is quote transitioning to commercial.
That was not, excuse me, counsel, that was not the testimony of my witness, that was not the testimony of my witness.
If I could answer the witness the question. And across the projected site, across Route 27, it says Perillo Court. Are those, what is that currently existing? Are those single-family homes?
27, as already stated in testimony, is the township of North Brunswick, and again, there are residential uses across.
Okay, so is it fair to, okay, so is it fair to say that the only commercial area that's remotely adjacent to the property in question is on 27 to the front entrance of the projected site, correct?
Well, I just want to speak clearly, because I think we're using some different words, we're using remotely and adjacent in the same question. So I would say remotely along Route 27, there is a mix of commercial and residential units. You can see it as I'm circling on the top of the screen, you can see office uses, commercial uses as you continue. So in this area, it is a mix of commercial and residential.
Could you zoom in, could you zoom into the projected site for a moment, just like?
No, I just wanted to kind of finish answering your question. We, directly adjacent to the site, there is both residential, which I'm highlighting, as well as if you look at the zoning map or the tax map, there is a commercial zone and commercial uses adjacent to our property as well.
Now, what is currently at the site, currently right now in the picture? No, no, if you could leave that up the way you have it, and increase it, if you could zoom into the site, what currently is existing at the site right now?
Currently, if you were to go on, it's a nursery landscaping garden center.
Okay, could you zoom into that one a little bit closer, please?
No problem.
Thanks. Okay, now, you were listening to your planner's testimony when he said that the existing site is more intense in coverage than currently exists. Is it not true that the garden center building is located on the 27 portion of the property? And the remainder of the property has outhouses and garden items throughout, spread throughout the community, throughout the site? Would you agree that that site is more intense than your proposed storage facility and vehicle storage canopies?
When I look at this site, I see a site that's been previous to serve. And just from this aerial, I see WB67, so I see large format, maybe WB50, so I see large format trucks sitting at the back of the site. I see disturbed piles of earth, so I see dirt, mulch, I see structures that can't really be accounted for.
Let's talk structure. Other than disturbed dirt, let's talk structures along the property line that goes all the way down through Hempstead. Do you see any structures along that property line other than in the beginning off of 27?
So we have greenhouses, we have vehicles parked, we have piles and masses.
Okay, but there are no large structures built on that property in that area?
Again, I think I've testified very clearly to the existing conditions. I don't know how much further I can go.
Counsel, are you also suggesting that in order for intensity, there needs to be a structure?
I'm not suggesting anything, I'm clarifying the question. If I could look at the second photograph that you introduced.
I'll pull up the site rendering, is this correct, A2?
Yes, let's look at the, I guess we'll call it the bottom portion where the canopy, the double canopy exists. You could blow it up a little more closer. Okay, that's perfect. Okay, my client's property is the bottom of the picture, that line. And I think you stated that, what is, where the canopy, you see two canopies and then a roadway in between. If I'm talking about the bottom canopy, it's, and you had mentioned that the applicant would agree to add an extra seven feet of buffering. What does this picture, how much buffering currently exists in this photograph from the bottom portion of that canopy to my client's property?
So as shown on this plan, there's 5.7 feet from the property line to the canopy edge. And what we'd be proposing is adding an additional seven feet, so that would become 12.7 feet.
What is the current, what is the current regulation as far as buffer and setback requirements that currently exist?
So there's a side yard, oh, sorry, Mr. Murphy.
No, please.
There is a side yard setback of 45 feet and a buffering requirement of 50 feet.
Okay, so buffer 50 feet and side yard setback. Your plan that you are seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval tonight only has less than six feet as an accommodation based on a comment from one of the board members, you'll add another. So that's 12 feet. Do you see any existing vegetation along the, or trees? You mentioned, you were removing, I think, 70-some-odd trees, I'm sorry, and you were planting, I believe you said 200 trees and bushes, plus 200-plus trees and bushes. Where are they reflected along the southerly border or along the lower border in this photograph rendering?
Mr. Counsel, I'm assuming that you weren't listening to the testimony of my client or of my applicant's expert when we talked about the fact that that would be installed, there'd be an additional seven feet of buffering that would then be planted. As a condition of approval, the plans would be revised and resubmitted as a condition of approval if we were to be approved tonight. Clearly, they're not on the plans. I'm hoping you're not just wasting everyone's time here with this blind questioning.
No, counselor, I was listening, and the question was, where on the existing plan that you submitted for tonight for final major site plan approval, does it show any buffering?
Is this a serious question?
That's a serious question, counselor. Okay, where does it show any buffering between the second canopy and my client's property?
So I'm going to do my best to answer the question, because I'm not 100% clear. We're doing, as the plan is shown today, just for the board members, the plan shows 5.7 feet from the property line to the back of the canopy. What we have to do tonight is a. What we've to do tonight as a condition of approval is we're going to increase that to twelve point seven feet. So we're going to add an additional seven feet of landscape area there, and then what we were going to do, similar to the mix of evergreens you see at the top of the page, we're going to continue that dense evergreen screen along the entirety of this canopy, so I'll zoom in, the canopy is about four hundred and four point one feet, so we're going to add four hundred feet of, of a row of evergreen screening to kind of create that dense canopy. And the planning using, again, our evergreens, so.
And the twelve, and the twelve feet that you're now proposing from, from the six feet that you proposed in this photograph, how high is that canopy?
I just want to, I'm just going to finish my thought, I'll definitely, you can ask all the questions you want, so these are fast-growing evergreens, they're a dense variety, I mean typically they grow twelve to twenty-four inches a year, so we expect this to be a dense, tall screen that will grow between this canopy and the property line.
Okay, the question is, how tall is the canopy that you're proposing?
So again, as previously stated in the testimony, it is seventeen feet.
Seventeen, and, and let's, let's talk about the main structure that we saw many photographs of. How tall are you seeking a, a height variance for the main structure as well?
We are seeking a variance for the number of stories, again, repeat testimony that was already provided, we are seeking a variance for the number of stories, not for the height of the building, thirty-five feet is permitted, we are proposing thirty-five feet, so the height itself is compliant.
Correct. And you showed your planner, I, I think it was the architect, I'm sorry, showed photographs of the building and zoomed in on the front little portion of the building that's facing twenty-seven with all glass. Is it not true that the remaining, the, the majority of the building is all stone, stone and brick rather than a glass structure?
That is, that is not correct. Mister, Mister Klein, if you want to answer that question, we could bring in Lewis as well, but I'd rather have you answer it. The building, well, there are no real windows in the building because you wouldn't have people looking into a storage unit. We have specifically designed it in a way that allows for it to not look like a box structure. There's breakup of the massing, there's, there's what is replicates the look of a window, so that people look at something that's not looking like a block of cement or other materials, is that correct, Mister Klein?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, well, well, let's pull up those pictures, let's pull up those pictures, I wasn't asking counsel to testify, I was asking.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to testify, sir, but what I'm saying is that you're wasting people's time when you start to have people repeat things you repeated multiple times.
Let's get on the amended council if you're talking about wasting time. Mister Klein, could you bring up the photograph of the building, the side of the building in brick and that you just had up for a minute and then was taken down? You testified evergreens grow very quickly, do you? I'll leave that. What, what kind of lighting variances are you seeking for this property?
I, do you want me to take down this exhibit, are we speaking to lighting?
No, no, you can keep it up because that accurately reflects, in other words, we zoomed into the front of the building that was glass that made it look like an office. I wanted the board to actually take a look at what my client's tenants are going to be looking at from their living room and bedroom windows. So what kind of lighting variances are you seeking with regard to your application?
So I'm just pulling up our, our lighting plan, it was included as part of the package C8. But again, we're, we were as part of the application originally seeking a waiver for illumination, and as we've already agreed to and noted to the board, that we have agreed to eliminate that waiver and comply with the light trespass requirements. So again, we're not seeking any variances associated with the lighting design.
Okay, and, and bringing back your attention to what currently exists, that nursery with, with the that currently exists, would you state that the lighting, that the property would be significantly lit up more than what currently exists for the nursery and that that's existing on the property today?
You know, I don't know the, the full extent of what exists there today, but what I can say is what we're proposing, and again, what we've agreed to tonight, I mean, we have motion sensors, we will have dimmers on all of our lights, so at nighttime during those off hours, these lights will dim, they will go on motion sensors. We're also not proposing or complying with all of the lighting requirements of the township. And the other thing to, I think that's important to note is these lights are downward facing, they're LED, they're dark sky compliant, the majority of the fixtures are located underneath the canopy in the secured area, so again, the these lights are, are going downward, you know, what you, there's no floodlights, there's no angled lights, I mean, these, these lights are again, designed to go directly downward and not provide any kind of intrusion or impact to the surrounding residents.
Now, your planner mentioned that because of the site was so long and narrow, it would be difficult to develop the property for its intended residential back of your chair. Residential clustered residential development. As an engineer, how many, if, how many different buildings do you think would fit on that site, and, and you're an engineer that you testified have done hundreds of different projects, if you were going to put a residential development with apartments on that site, how many buildings do you think the maximum you would be able to fit on that site? In your opinion, as an expert?
I think there's, there's kind of multiple parts to the, to the question, but I, I think, look around us, I think this aerial speaks for itself, you know, could you really, you know, replicate what you see to the north and the south of us on a site like this? And again, I, I made it very clear that the site is six and a half times deeper than it is long, I mean, you know, this not an ideal site, it's extremely unique shape, so again, I'm, I'm here presenting and speaking to, to our application, but again, I think this aerial does a good job showing that, I think it would be, it would be difficult to do a cluster development like what you see around us on a, on a.
Let's zoom, let's zoom in and, let's zoom in to the, if you don't mind, for a moment. Okay, look at, look at the buildings that are in the Hempstead Apartments. How many do you think, do you think you could get fifteen buildings on that site? I mean, is it possible, are you saying, are you saying that you couldn't get any residential buildings on that site?
I never stated that.
Okay, if you could give a guesstimate to the board, how many of those buildings that are currently adjacent, how many do you think you could get on that site? In your professional opinion as an engineer?
I don't see the reason for answering this question, I don't understand.
I don't think he missed, yeah, Mr. Murphy, I, I, Mr. Roth, he didn't testify with respect to the residential development of the site. You know, he testified as to the proposed application, so I don't think it's appropriate for him to speculate.
I, I could ask the planner, I could ask the planner if.
Excuse me, counsel, we're not here seeking, we're not here seeking an approval for residential development.
No, but.
We don't know how many buildings can get on there.
He testified in his.
Assuming, but Mister Counsel, I'm assuming if you're really, if you're really opposing this project, that you have professionals that are going to be sworn in to, to discuss that, so let's do it.
Well, counselor.
Let's not do it, let's, excuse me, let's stick to discussing the project that we have an application for. If you have objections, state your objections, the reasons for them, and move on. This board doesn't have to rehear this entire application. You've been repetitive, you've asked questions about things that were already testified to, that are, are again, repetitive. Clean it up, state what you need to do, and let's move on, please.
I'll just summarize then, I won't ask any more questions. The, the proposed plan is inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan. The testimony that the property couldn't be zoned is, is improper, it adversely affects not only my client's community but the townhome community directly adjacent to it. They're seeking variances for height, setback, lighting, stories and size. And for every boat that goes in there, you need a truck, a trailer and a, and a forklift to put in, there's been no testimony, what's, no testimony whatsoever. There any limits to how many times someone can go access their boat during the summer? It's, it's not first intended use and, and we are placing our objection respectfully to the board to not grant the approval for this storage facility on the premises.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other members of the public, Mark? And I think we need to separate any more of the public, those living in Hempstead Gardens have been spoken for.
That's correct.
Yeah, and Frank, can you explain that just to the public, so you know, we do have, we had an attorney who, who, who represented Hempstead Gardens. I'm not sure, I'm assuming that's the homeowners association, or is it, or is it, or is it a?
Mister Rothberg, if it's a rental project or if it's a for-sale project.
Let's bring him back.
It's a rental, it's a rental project, I'm speaking for the owner of the apartment complex, I am not speaking for any individual tenants that are also going to be adversely affected by this development.
Yep, so in, in that, thank you, Mister Rothberg, so in that case, if there are residents, they, they should be entitled to speak because he's only, he's only appearing on behalf of the property owner.
Got it, thank you. All right, so let's try, we, we did try Mister Hoover before, I'll try him again, Mister Hoover? Second, Mister Hoover, can you, we can't hear you. I'll, I'll come back to him. All right, so as somebody who's identifying themselves as concerned resident, you will, I'll unmute you, you'll have to identify yourself by name, spell your last name, provide your address. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Hi, good evening, everyone, and good evening to the board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. So I'm one of the residents from North Brunswick whose property is just bang opposite to this upcoming storage facility.
Can you please provide us with your name?
Sure, Arun, A R U N, last name is Karande, K as in king, A R A N, D as in David, E as in Easter.
Thank you, and your address?
Fourteen ninety Pirillo Court.
Thank you, could you just raise? Could you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the reason, so basically, of course, as the previous gentleman spoke, the concern that I have and my neighbors have, of course, I'm talking for on my behalf, we are a community of sixteen single-family houses right across from this farmer's nursery. So right now, meaning the place, the few concerns that we have is basically about the height, right? And also given the fact that there are glasses in the front, meaning we are concerned about privacy. Right, meaning, is anyone going to be able to basically look from the third floor towards my property? I think it wasn't very clear if those windows or those glass windows are basically see-through or they are just like a display window without, without anyone being able to see from that side to the Route twenty-seven.
They are display windows, so people would not be able to look out from them.
They won't be able to look out, okay, great. Another quick question that I had was what kind of lighting are you going, I know a lot of questions have been asked and I'm not an expert, so I, I'm just a resident, I'm paying twenty-five thousand dollars property tax, I'm just asking the question, what kind of lighting are you going to have in the front of that storage?
No, no problem, so we're, there are, the building is, is ninety feet back from Route twenty-seven. There are streetlights on Route twenty-seven, what we're proposing are, there's two shielded area lights, so they're kind of either, they're kind of facing into the drive aisles, so they're shielded, and then there are a few wall packs, there's a total of four wall packs mounted on the building, but those are, again, are those downward facing LED wall pack, so, you know, along, like within Route seven, Route twenty-seven, you know, we have, you know, anywhere from zero to point three foot, foot handles within the, within the highway, but again, you know, from a, you know, we have, you know, as you kind of work your way out, I mean, there's a very little amount of light that's kind of coming off the front of the site, so most of the lighting is kind of contained within the the parking areas and contained within like the areas around the site.
Okay, so like how, how tall will this light be, like just sort of, is this going to be an eyesore? Because again, I'm concerned for my property value as well, right? Meaning is this going to be, I, I think the front, like is it going to look like a storage or is it, is it going to look like a storage building or like a office building? And I know you showed me the rendering, right, I did see everything for the last almost two, two hours. But I'm still going to ask you the question because I want to be a double issuer that I'm not going to basically be signing up to be host here, so what kind of a front, like the front that you're going to have? Why is it like three stories tall, like can't this be complying with all the other houses around, so how tall is this going to be compared to the houses that are across Route twenty-seven?
The building, I guess I can state to things that I'm, that I, that I know, the building is thirty-five feet high, thirty-five feet is permitted. I can't speak to the exact height of the single-family homes across the street. You know, again, I'm, I'm looking at aerial imagery, they probably range in the two, maybe two and a half story range, so but again, the, the height of the building is in compliance with the zoning requirement, it's the number of stories that we're seeking to relieve.
Mister Klein, Mister Klein, this is just, this is counsel for our client, just to, to answer Mister Karande's question here. Can you explain that this building is not designed to look like the, everyone thinks of self-storage as kind of these ugly boxes, this is not the case here, this is not what we're proposing to develop.
Correct, I mean, I think the, the rendering showed this, but I mean, you're really looking at it, you know, contemporary office building, you're looking at different materials, awnings, you know, breaking up the facade, I mean, this is, this by, by no means is going to look like a, a what you think about back in the day of a, a metal sheet, you know, self-storage building. You know, there's a lot of architectural interest, especially at the front, especially at the corner element, but this will, will have a kind of an office or professional-like feel that'll really, I think, kind of blend in with the surroundings.
Sure, and what about hours of operation, because that's one of the major concerns is like, because I heard like people can go in from five AM until like ten PM, seven days a week, I think I heard, right, meaning can those hours be reduced because honestly, like, you know, there's going to be a lot of noise because my, my problem is my house is right up, and my bedroom, master bedroom is right along Route twenty-seven, so I'm going to be hearing a lot of noises if people are going to come there at four forty-five AM waiting for this thing to open up.
And, no, it's, it's a great point, you know, the type of activity and the, the vehicles and the speeds and the things you find on a state highway are going to be much more intense than people using this site. And again, I, you know, it's a, it's a low intensity, it's a low impact use, you know, people, you know, during its peak time period, you know, during, during the week, the AM, you know, you're looking at, the AM peak, I believe, was twelve trips, so you know, that would be, you know, that's a very low amount, and that's the peak period, so at, you know, at the hours of, of five AM, six AM, when it's open, you, you may, you may get one person over the course of a month or two months, again, people aren't lining up to go to this type of facility. There's not a commercial component where people are getting up early to grab, you know, a lawnmower out of theirself, they, they can't do that type of thing, so again, it's you know, kind of the activity and the amount of trips that you find on the highway are much more significant than what's coming in and out of the site.
Sure, thank you, Mister Klein, I just had one more question, like I know you said that people can't, like a landscaper can't park their equipment over there, like how, how is that all going to be restricted?
So I can answer that question, I think. Mister Karande, it's a very, it's a good question, so there's a lease agreement with every single person that rents a space at this, at this facility, there's restrictions in that lease agreement. If someone is to violate that lease agreement, they're, they're essentially evicted, think of it like, like a normal lessy, lesser relationship. Those, those things are strictly enforced by ownership, this, this company does not play around when it comes to that stuff.
Got it, and, and one last question is how are we going to ensure that there's no overnight parking over there, because I saw that there's a lot of parking in the front and on the sides of that building? And I'm, I guess the major concern is with people just like coming and, and unwanted people coming and parking there overnight, how is that going to be enforced?
Yeah, so, so again, Chris Murphy here, I, I think I can answer your question, so. So first of all, people that lease spaces are not allowed to park overnight in the, the normal parking in front. Secondly, the site is, is monitored twenty four seven. If we see that being an issue, the, the township will be engaged to tow vehicles, or we will have vehicles towed. There's enough, there's no overnight parking in these, in these spots in front.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the time, guys.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next.
And we're going to call, call in user. Okay, begins nine oh eight, two eight five. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Chip Hoover, H O E V E R. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
First of all, my apologies for the technical issues this evening. As I said, my name is Chip Hoover. I live at Nine Stallion Court in the township, but I represent, or I don't represent. I am the site manager for Kingsbury Acres condominium association. And I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Hoover, before you proceed, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have met with the applicant and gone over a lot of the plans, and they have shared some of the plans with us previously. But as I, I got additional plans yesterday and today, and we do have some concerns. And I'll, I think they may be addressing them, but I'm just not clear with the amount of, of information I have and the plans I saw. My, my biggest complaint, or our, our biggest concern is stormwater outfall from this site. Being right next door and having suffered numerous, numerous floods on the property, we're really concerned with the amount of impervious surface on the site that is not going to be properly discharged. And so my first question is, where does this system discharge?
Great. Mr. Chair, we're going to call in Josh, Josh Klein, our engineer, to answer that question. That's okay.
So, so today, water kind of discharges in all directions. A good, a good majority of the water kind of works its way to the, to the north. A portion of the water goes to the south, and a portion of the, the water goes to the, the west. Now, what we're proposing and is a system of both pervious pavement as well as bio-retentions. What we're doing is we're kind of filtering and holding the water and then slowly releasing it. So there's, what we've done is we've analyzed kind of the points where water today discharges. And at all of those points, there was three points analyzed. We are ensuring that the peak flow, so the, the amount of water that comes off the site today in all storm events that we look at, two, ten, and one hundred year events are not only going to be, they're going to actually be lower than what's out there today. So we're required by, by the new regulations to meet reductions. So we're having the two-year storm event, we're reducing the peak flow rate by fifty percent. The ten-year storm event, we're reducing the flow rate by thirty percent. And the hundred-year storm event, we're reducing the flow rate by twenty percent. So in all, all the storms we look at, we're having kind of a reduction of those flow rates.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I appreciate that input. My concern is the current property is pretty much very minimal impervious coverage, and then you're putting in a high rate of impervious coverage. So my question again is, where is all that water going to go? I understand you probably have symbols in back to hold water. But there, there's going to be a lot of water going back there. Behind Kingsbury Acres, there is a retention basin. And when we get a significant storm, and I'm not talking Sandy, I'm not talking Ida, I'm, I'm not talking a ten-year storm, I'm talking a good, healthy summer rainstorm, that retention basin gets water in, and quite a bit. And that's taking a load of water from Kingsbury, and Kingsbury is a fairly lush site compared to what, what you're proposing. So again, my, my question is, where does the water finally discharge to?
So the, the water, I've got a very small portion because of the topography change, but the water ultimately goes to the back.
Can you share, can you share maybe our, our second exhibit, the, the site rendering, colored rendering? And I think we might have lost your, your video.
It looks like it got knocked out.
There you go. Okay.
Hopefully you can see me now.
Yep, we can see you. I think, I think exhibit two would be, would be helpful in describing.
So, so today, there's a portion of the water is discharged at a point, I'm circling on the screen here, a point on, I'm circling on the screen here, and a point that I'm circulating, circling on the screen here. So there's, there's, there's a, a few different things that we're doing. We're, we're utilizing scour holes. So water is kind of enters into this, into this kind of gravel chamber, let's call it, or gravel pit, and the water kind of bubbles out. It's a way to kind of help, you know, prevent any type of impact or damage to a neighboring property. Again, we're, we're holding water in our bio-retention area as well as our pervious pavement system and slowly releasing it, you know, to kind of prevent any adverse impact to downstream facilities or to the surrounding neighborhood. So these are all things we're looking at. And I, you know, I think one of the important parts is with the DRCC is we are being held, you know, to the highest standards in the state of New Jersey when it comes to stormwater management. So we have the town, we have the board engineer who's reviewing our, our stormwater management. We also have the state that's reviewing our stormwater management. And again, we're, we're meeting reductions, we're meeting water quality, and we're providing these, these various systems to kind of ensure there's no adverse impact to the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, and I appreciate that information. But again, I have two hundred and seventy-two homeowners who own their residences immediately adjacent. And with all due respect, you haven't answered my question. You have symbols, I assume, in the back? You're going to put in the, in your stormwater retention area? How are you going to retain the water?
Yeah, I want to make sure, so the, this, how we're retaining it, or there's the area in red, do you see the area in red that I'm highlighting around the building?
Okay, right.
So that is that's the permeable pavement. So some of the water enters into that and is stored in there. And then this area in the back that looks, you know, kind of all essentially like wooded with all these trees, those are two area. So those are two above-ground facilities that they capture, they hold, and then they filter stormwater. So those are the waters being held.
Where is the water leaving? When it leaves there, where is it going? What's your, where's your discharge point?
So there's three points. There's one that I'm circling on the screen right now. There's one at the top of the, of the bio-retention area that I'm circling right now, and then there's one to the left-hand side
Okay.
circling right now.
I get that's the point where it exits, but where does it exit to? I'm sorry if I'm being redundant, but I just, I'm not getting an answer.
So, so water on the site today discharges to those three points. And that's what we look at, you know, we look at the existing conditions, the board engineer looks at it, the DRCC looks at it. So that's, those are the, the three points where water discharges to today. And so we're kind of matching those existing drainage patterns with our design. But what we're looking to do is kind of meet these reductions to hold the water back longer, stored on our site, and slowly release it. I think one of the, the big things is, I know you were talking about the existing site today where, you know, there's, you know, when you look at an aerial, yes, there's not more impervious there, but brush piles, mulch piles, you know, kind of this type of staging and the type of paths, you know, in order to have these, these trucks be able to go back and forth in these areas. You know, those areas today are essentially acting very similar to impervious surfaces. We also have clay soils in this area. I'm sure the residents, the board, you know, board members are aware. These are poor draining soils. So the, the soils that, that are out there today, I mean, again, that, that entirety of that site is really in a lot of ways, not only with the actual soil being clay, but also the way that it's been treated for over the last sixty years. And it's, it's acting, you know, very close to an impervious surface. And today, there's, you know, water isn't being captured and treated and stored like we're doing now. You know, water is, is kind of directly discharging to these kind of same points that we're matching. It has the potential to, to create issues under the existing condition, which we're going to address and approve upon under the proposed condition.
How much water can the back retention area hold? Because with, again, all due respect, could you put the exhibit back up, please?
Yes. Sorry, I was going to pull the, pull the report.
Because with all these little tiny drains along the side of the building, when we have a substantial storm as we do, and I've lived here forty years in the township, and I actually lived at two eighteen Kingsbury a hundred years ago, and I've been there at Kingsbury during Ida, during, during Sandy, during all the tropical storms we've had. And I know what happens over there with the water. And again, I don't want to be a dead horse. I just don't, I, I am, don't feel that I'm getting an answer. You're creating all impervious surface. You're putting blacktop down, I assume, for these driveways and for the parking area?
Well, there's
Is that correct?
Of pervious pavement and asphalt or concrete surface.
And where is that water going to go as it goes through that pervious pavement?
The pervious pavement is, is lined with an underdrain, which connects into the stormwater management system onsite, the drainage system, which goes to the bio-retention area. I think
Okay.
do my best to try to help. No, sorry.
You still haven't, where the water discharges from that bio-retention area? Does it sit there for, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to seep into the soil? Because as you yourself said, we have clay and shale. The water doesn't go anyplace. I've done enough drainage problems at, at Kingsbury that I know it doesn't go. So I'm just, I'm just not very comfortable with the answers you've given, but thank you for that. I'll move along. You're talking about lighting. You're going to have wall packs on the north side of the building. And to be clear, we're the north side, Hempstead is the south side. And I've been here forty years. I, I know the directions. I also actually am familiar with the site, and I've walked it many times. And I've had discussions with Mr. Fama about the site many times, so I'm familiar with what's there. So as far as lighting goes, you're saying the windows on the north side of the building are not actually windows? So they will not emit light?
They, I think they're, they're during, the windows, correct, they're display windows. I believe the windows that are along those three sides of the facade would not display light.
Okay, so we're not going to get night light from the people going in there after hours, after dark?
Correct.
My other question is, with the wall packs, you're saying, you know, you have dark sky compliant, and they're, they're pointing down, but your building is thirty-five feet tall. The bedrooms are not thirty-five feet up in the air. They're, they're below that. So how much lighter are we going to be getting from these lights on the side of the building at night?
I under, understand your concern, and we've, we definitely have, have looked at this, you know, with the applicant. So currently, the, the building lights are shown at twenty feet. And I think, you know, and as we've, as you stated, we've met with you in the past, past, we want to be a good neighbor. As a condition of approval, we would agree that all the, the building mounted lighted on both the north and the south side of the page, as well as the, the west, we would lower it to ten-foot mounting heights. That brings it down to about as low as we can, we can have it. Again, so that, that brings it, you know, all of that lighting down. And again, these are, they're downward facing dark sky compliant lights. So I think to kind of help alleviate some of the concerns you have, you know, we would definitely agree to do that as a condition of approval.
And I would be, you know, very happy to work with you to make sure that everything is, works for both, because we would like you to be a good neighbor, and by the same token, we want to be a good neighbor. My other concern, or our other concern is that it's going to be three-story. And in all honesty, I didn't know until yesterday that it was three. I thought it was two. That's, that's my bad. So I'm a little bit concerned about these homeowners looking out their bedroom windows and seeing a, a brick wall out there. Because you have a thirty-five-foot building and a six-foot fence. And even though arborvitae and, and evergreens grow pretty quickly, still going to take a while to hide that from the, from all the residents. And I can tell you already, I've had residents complain of the view as it is now, who's had to plant trees, destroying the peace them. So I, I need to make sure that we're going to have good buffering on, on the north side of the property. So we don't have an ugly site looking at, out there for people.
No, understood. I think you're going to, you know, today, I'll just pull up the aerial, because I think it helps show a little bit of what's happening, especially on the north side. So all of these, these existing large mature trees, and I know we spoke to you about it, we're protecting and kind of maintaining these large mature trees. So those are, those are conveniently located in a lot of areas that I think will help alleviate some of your concern. And then what we're looking to do is kind of infill that with that evergreen buffer. So again, we're, we're, the evergreen plantings we have onsite are between about six and seven feet. And a lot of that comes down to supply and really being able to get it from a nursery. It's very difficult now more than ever to secure plantings. But what we're, what we've looked to do is use fast-growing evergreen trees, you know. Again, these trees, depending on the exact species, but for example, a green arborvitae, you see growth of twelve to twenty-four inches per year. So, you know, even at a, a more conservative, you know, one foot per year, I mean, after five years, I mean, you're looking at twelve to fifteen feet, you know. So, you know, that starts to be kind of, you know, infill those existing mature trees to kind of help create and soften that view.
So yay for the people moving ten years from now.
Well, I, again, there's some very large, and I know you're, you're obviously aware of it, trees that are all along. And again, I'm highlighting it all along our property line that are on your side, that I think provide a lot of that benefit. And then again, the, the, you know, idea is we've, we've created that buffer that will continue to grow in time and continue to help kind of infill that.
Right. And I'm sure the applicant is going to work with us to make sure all the holes are filled in.
Yes, we would definitely, you know, as we, as we did before, you know, we would continue to work with you after.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Chip. Thank you.
Next.
Mark, I don't think we give you
Sorry about that. I, I could blame, I could blame technological difficulties, but I'd be lying. Yeah, everybody with their hand up has already spoken, so I don't believe we have anybody else.
Okay, then we'll move and close the meeting to the public. And Mr. Murphy, you can sum up.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. I, I think, I think this was a very productive meeting. Quite frankly, I, I commend the board. I, I do hearings throughout the entire state, and it was one of the more organized and professional meetings I've been part of. So, so thank you for that. Again, we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, along with the D-one use variance and, and certain C variants relief in order to permit the construction of, of the self-storage facility in the zoning district. We put on testimony by our, by our professional engineer, our architect and our professional planner, which I think satisfies the criteria required under the municipal land use law to, for the board to grant the D-one variance and the C variance relief that's, which is subsumed within the, the D-one use variance. We, we have heard the comments of the public. We, we, we want to be a good neighbor. We will work with, with the neighboring properties to make sure that that's possible, to give people what they need. We think this is going to be a low intensity use and, and just a good use for this zoning district. We, we did hear the, the objections of, of, of Mr. Rothberg. I will note for the record that professional testimony from a licensed architect or engineer or planner disputing any of the, the testimony of our professionals that are, that are sworn, were sworn in and are professional experts under, you know, before this board, was not presented this evening. With that being said, I will speak to Mr. Rothberg, and we'll be happy to have a conversation following this meeting. I hope that the board will grant our approval. But again, we, we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with the D-one use variance relief and the other variance relief requested. We thank you so much for your time and look forward to being a, hopefully a productive member of the, the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, board members, any? Thank you. Okay, board members, any questions, any discussion? Uh, maybe somebody can put together a motion for discussion.
First, I'd like to talk about this a little bit if we could. Um, you know, it's a very kind of an odd combination of, uh, things coming together in one place. Um, I didn't like the, uh, the way in which the application was presented. It felt like a steamroller kind of a night. Um, and I also went and I visited the site. And um, it was a, an agricultural site to be sure. So this would be more in line with what was going around, but they're just not taking enough concern or care about the neighbors. And they, if that, if that project relies upon twenty-five short spaces. Um, I think that they should get rid of that. And then I, I, at the beginning, I thought it was too intensive use, but um, I think it works if they get rid of those spaces, but I'm, I'm opposed to it unless something gets done about that.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep, this is Kunal and, um, you know, I heard the concerns of the water, uh, flow. And I think that's real. Um, I, I think that would be an absolute real impact. Um, and if, if this place is, uh, uh, marked, not if it is marked for residential and, uh, the places. Uh, I'm, I'm not really sure, um, of the value add here. And particularly, uh, the water plus, uh, the sidings. And as, uh, Mr. Shepherd mentioned, um, yeah, there are too many gaps that I see.
Okay, anybody else?
This is Gary. I'm also concerned about the sufficient buffering at this point. So I, I am not gonna. Oh, okay, this application.
Right, I personally, I think that the use would in and of itself would work because it is a low-density use. However, I think the problems that have been discussed over and over again would, for the most part, all go away if the project were roughly about one-half the size that it is, that will leave some room for, for the improvements, you know, that you talk about. All that being said, we still need a motion unless someone else has some other comments.
I have a question. Um, I guess just to understand the first, the first part of the, of the building that's not the canopy has like eight hundred self-storage units, I guess, so potentially that many customers. And, uh, so the traffic report like with twenty-two trips, um, and the nineteen parking spots. Is, it, does that reflect the number of storage units or is, is that really based on the square footage or something like that? It, it just seems.
Let me, yeah, let me, I, I think I can clarify just very generally on that. I mean, I, I, I think that traffic engineer in, in documenting or coming up with those numbers would have cited the, um, um, institute I T E figures on, for self-storage. And that would have based, been based on a number of, of self-storage facilities, well-documented amount of traffic that generates from these type uses. So, um, at least on that issue, I would say if, if the engineer was citing from I T E, then you can be pretty rest assured that the numbers that the applicant provided to you as far as the traffic numbers would be accurate.
Exactly.
Uh, I, I'd like to add, add a comment.
I, I know. Take a motion. I move that we grant, uh, seventeen eighty-four.
Robert Shepherd, Joel was speaking.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't think you heard him. Go ahead, Joel.
I, 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 I just want to add, add a comment. Uh, I, I know from personal experience, people who have used these units, they, uh, especially in transition from one home to another, that, uh, I, I know someone that has, has a unit like this and, and, and they moved their furniture into it and they haven't been there for, for two years. So it, it doesn't get daily tra- traffic if you worry about the traffic. Most, most of these, uh, mostly storage units, use, people dump stuff in it and leave it there for a while and, and, and don't come back until they want to move the stuff out. I'm not talking about the, the, uh, the, the canopy area. I'm talking about, about the storage area.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a, a brief comment. I'm just wondering if it seems like the majority of the concerns, um, whether it's from the board or from the members of the community is around the, the ability for the site to be able to, uh, handle, uh, the stormwater management. I'm just wondering if the facility, if the size of what is being proposed, if that was, would, if that could be reduced and, um, then better accommodate. Uh, because I can certainly understand there being a concern about, uh, how that would affect the surrounding areas in terms of uh, flooding and things of that nature. I'm just wondering if that could be, uh, cut down the size of the, the prod- project or the number of units and that would, uh, potentially reduce the, the impact to the stormwater management.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, this is attorney for, I don't know, counsel, if I'm, if I'm able to interject here. Um.
Go ahead. Depends on what you're gonna say.
Well, I, I, well, I started by saying this is the best board I've ever been in front of, but I, I think that, which it still is, it's a great board. I, I think we've heard some of these comments. I wasn't quite frankly expecting some of, some of this response from the board based on the testimony, but, um, I think it might be worth us, and I'm not trying to, I, I don't want to spend three hours and then ask for this generally, but based on some of the comments, it might be worth us, us adjourning and, and going back and, and rethinking some of the elements, meeting with the neighbors again. I mean, we have met with, with, um, uh, Chip and, and, and his team, um, a few times. Um, maybe we meet with Mr. Mr. Rothberg and, and, and just maybe re-envision certain aspects of it. I would hate to, to go down on a vote tonight and then not be able to move forward at all. I, I would respectfully request that the board grant an adjournment if we could.
I think you're asking for a wise, uh, you're, you're wise asking for that.
Sure.
To happen. I, I, uh, echo the thoughts that Cheryl presented. And I think that, as I said before, I think a lot of the problems can go away with a reduction in the size of the facility.
Uh, 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 that's me.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna ask for an adjournment without action, uh, that's up to you too. Joel?
Yeah, what, uh, what, what I would suggest is that this become a two-story building, e- even if you extend out where, where the, where, where the co- covered areas make the building longer. Because I think one of the objections is if you live there, you, you see this tall bu- building in your backyard. I think a two-story building would be less, less, uh, distracting to, to the people who live there.
Well, we'll see what they, uh, come back with and is, would, would you agree then, I guess, to, uh, adjourn and pretty much withdraw the motion without, the application without prejudice for the time being?
Yes.
We would agree to that. If, if that's for the board, I don't know if that question was for me, but for, for the applicant, we would, we respectfully request that we would waive any statutory, statutory time, time limits and ask that notice be carried to the next hearing when we do get there. Um, if that's okay, we'll, we'll obviously counsel renotice if, if the project changes substantially.
Yeah, when is the next meeting, Christine? Is it the fourth of January?
Uh, the me, the next zoning board meeting would be January sixth.
Oh, sixth, I'm sorry.
You don't mean, I, I, my client might, uh, be mad at me. But I, I think that in light of the fact that we are going to probably want to have a meeting or, or two with, with neighbors and to think about redesign, Christine, is there a meeting in the second, third week, excuse me, in January that might be more sufficient?
Uh, we, we have, um, uh, you know what? Why don't, why don't we just, um, uh, is there some way, Frank, that we could just adjourn this with, to be announced where I could talk with him? Uh, we have some.
But we need to carry it to us. We need to carry it to a date certain in order for him to, you know, to preserve the notice. And I think if we do that to the fourth or to the twentieth, which is fine, as long as we announce it this evening. And if we need to, we need to carry it further, we can, we can announce it at that time.
All right, the twentieth is definite, the twentieth is definitely a no-go. We.
Christine, if you don't, if you don't mind, I, I think that the council suggestion, why don't we carry it to the fourth? If we need more time, we can always, you know, adjourn again at that hearing.
Sounds good. It's not the fourth, it's the sixth, but.
January sixth.
January sixth. Yes, that sounds good. I'll carry it, Chris, to January sixth and then you and I will talk and I, just so you know, if it needs to be carried further out, I will make that announcement, uh, come January sixth. You don't need to come to the meeting. I will send you a copy of the agenda proving that it's been carried. And then we'll, you and I'll talk to it whenever you get a chance to talk with your client as well. And then we'll see what works best. Okay?
Okay, I think that's, I think that's fair. And I still, I thank, thank the board for, for, for their really true professionalism tonight. Thank you.
And just for, for, for member, for members of the public, um, you know, with respect to this application, I, I think it's clear. Uh, but it will be carried with no further notice to January sixth. And at that point, if it doesn't proceed, it's likely to be carried again to another date that'll be announced at that time.
Yeah, and Frank, Christine's going to bring up the WebEx information for the public.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. All that being said, we can consider now adjourning.
Wait, hold up.
No, no, Rob, Mr. Thomas, we cannot adjourn until I bring that up. So.
Right.
I'm just waiting for Mark to make me presenter so I can share the screen and I'll bring it up. Then once I read it, you're welcome to.
I just wanted everybody to have time to consider it in case they want to continue meeting for some other reason. For another hour or two.
No.
Woo, easy there.
But anyway, I hope everyone has a good, happy, healthy vacation.
Yes.
Jesus.
Okay, so for anybody wishing to, um, be part of the meeting concerning one seven eight four Capital Holdings LLC. The matter is now being carried to January sixth meeting, a virtual meeting at, uh, seven thirty P M. Uh, for anybody wishing to be a part of it through the through the audio, the number is one four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. And your access code would be two, three, three, four, six, two, six, six, seven, four, eight. And anybody wishing to, let me just get into the other screen. I apologize. We just were recently told that we were going to have to have it things, uh, things virtually. So I had to, uh, put something up to. Hold on one second. I'll get anybody who wants to, uh, be part of it. Through. So I'll need to open.
All right, Christine, I got it. I got it. So if you're going to participate via WebEx, it'll be on the township, uh, website at Franklin TWPNJ.org forward slash home, forward slash components, forward slash calendar, forward slash event, forward slash one seven six two two, forward slash two one nine three. If you have any questions, you can, uh, contact Christine at seven three two eight seven three twenty-five hundred, extension six two one five.